All the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Would you like to conduct the roll?
Sure thing. Supervisor McGordy.
Present.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Here.
Supervisor Hashak.
Here.
Chair Jurdie.
Here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Here.
Okay, next thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll do that now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next, we have public expression on items that are not on today's agenda or on closed session. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do.
On the line is Anna Stokel.
Here. I'm here.
You may begin.
People living in trailers in the rural residential zone, please listen because Mendocino County may be after you. I have several friends who live in trailers and I know of other trailers in districts other than my own, and this is a serious problem. I live in a trailer on my own property. This trailer was my legal home in the town of Fort Bragg before I bought the property, which I had been converting to a farm. It was my intention to file building plans sooner, but it hasn't worked out where I can do so. In my particular case, I'm zoned RR5 in Division 1, code section 20.168.040, use of a trailer coach. Allows me for the temporary use of a trailer, but not to use it as a permanent home. This makes no sense to me. If my home is not good enough for temporary use... If my home is good enough for temporary use, then it's good enough for permanent use. Furthermore, we have a lack of housing problem here in Mendocino, yet the county wants to kick me out of mine. When I first moved here, I couldn't find housing for a year. I did some Airbnb and I actually had to live in Motel 6 in Fort Bragg for 60 days. I have been trying to work with the Board of Supervisors for over a year and have not been able to get any traction whatsoever. Recently, Mendocino County decided to serve me legal papers. I have asked for the complaint to be dismissed so that it can be dealt with in a more constructive manner, but Michael McDucey, Deputy County Counsel, says his client, which is Mendocino County, has not authorized him to do so. I have sent four emails to you supervisors and left three voicemails to code enforcement, none of which were replied or even acknowledged. I have been trying to represent myself because I cannot afford an attorney, but Mr. McDucey stopped returning my emails weeks ago. I have no idea the status of my case, whom in code enforcement is pushing this, or what I can do at about this point. My home was legal to live in Fort Bragg, three miles away. It should be legal to live in on my own property. I had the well tested, installed all of the pumps, pressure tanks, and piping. The septic system was designed by Carl Riddeman. That is where the waste is pumped. I intend to build something using a Class K permit eventually. I have changed my mind three times about the most appropriate structure would be. I'm a great engineer and engineering manager, but I don't know anything about constructing a new home. The other impediment is I need to be able to make money here in Mendocino in order to file permits and build something, which I have not yet been able to do. I have converted a property that sat dormant for 10 years into a small farm, put a lot of investment and hard work. This was the first year I hoped to make positive income, and then the coronavirus hit. Additionally, the county...
That concludes public expression.
Next. Yeah, next we have consent calendar. Do we have any items to be polled? Supervisor Mulhern.
I know that the General Government Committee is working on updating the process for county grants moving forward. There are four contracts on the consent calendar, 4L, 4M, 4N, and 4O, which were previously approved by the Board of Supervisors. I would like to make a request. Because these are four-year contracts, I would like to... It can come back on consent, but I would like to see the data for each year come back to the board so that we can watch that each year instead of waiting for four years.
Okay, so I'd like to ask Deputy Clerk Atlas Pearson, can you capture that in the minutes as the Director from the Board?
Can you please restate that?
Yes, I would like for items 4L, 4M, 4N, and 4O to bring back the data on the contracts annually to the Board of Supervisors for review.
Okay, we'll capture that as a Director from the full Board unless I see any objection. I don't see any objection from the Board. Supervisor Hashak.
Yes, I'd like to poll item 4H.
Okay, so we'll discuss that separately. Any other items? Okay, let's go directly to 4H.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. 4H is the creation of the Public Safety Advisory Board. It's the second reading. We discussed it last meeting, and Supervisor Williams brought up the issue about AB 1185. Supervisor Jurdie and I were on the ad hoc that created this framework for the Public Safety Advisory Board. But at the time when Supervisor Williams brought up that AB 1185, I wasn't familiar with it. And so with some research and talking with the other part of the ad hoc Supervisor Jurdie, we both did our research and we think that it might be appropriate that this item get polled and sent to County Council, where County Council could give us some options about what implementation of AB 1185, you know, what are some things, options that we can do to implement it, if that's the way we want to go as a Board. So I think at this point, it would be proper if the Boards so directs that we send it to County Council to come up with a memo to create an option white paper for us.
And I agree, and I'd just like to say, maybe we could get some feedback from County Council. I did not speak with them prior to today's meeting about this item. But I guess I want to make sure is our... We have a couple of options. It seems like we could proceed with the ordinance and begin the process of pointing members to the committee and then concurrently direct the County Council's office to provide both the Public Safety Advisor Board and the Board of Supervisors and the public with information and options for implementing 1185. I just want to make sure that we're not slowing ourselves down so that whatever we do, we do it as promptly as we can. So perhaps we could get some feedback from County Council, whether or not it would be more expedient to act concurrently on the two issues at the same time or to hold off adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would say in terms of what's going to be the most expedient, I think it depends a lot on what the Board's particular desired outcome is going to be and what might happen in terms of getting input from the Public Safety Advisory Board as to this issue, as to whether its structure should be different. So I think Supervisor Williams had brought up during the prior meeting that essentially if we start drafting bylaws, if we start drafting rules, we start going through processes that would look at one particular structure and then have to sort of rewrite and change those because the Board decides to change direction. That could be inefficient and that could slow things down. On the other hand, if the Board wanted to go ahead and create this body and then sort of hold off on some of those primarily just to get the community input or input from the members appointed to the body as to, you know, how they want the thing to be structured and what they think could be effective in terms of the overall structure of the body, the Board could certainly go that route as well. I would say frankly, both routes have some risk of inefficiency. Both routes have some risk of duplication of effort, and I think it depends a lot on sort of how thoroughly the Board wants to research this issue now before it starts appointments or whether it wants to start appointments and then be getting input from those appointments as to the decisions that are made down the road.
Okay, other comments? Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I'm impressed with the ad hoc. I think you two have done really well. And I'm sorry that you didn't know about AB 1185. Due to the Brown Act, there wasn't any way for us to communicate. And so for the public's benefit, you know, I think that... I imagine the ad hoc, if the ad hoc had had the proper knowledge, that it probably would have been incorporated from the start. So overall, really good work, and I'm thankful that you two decided to bring this back. If we're going to align with 1185, I could see the scope changing somewhat. Maybe we wouldn't be looking at ambulance service or roadside trash and some of the other items that were previously discussed, which could affect the makeup of who wants to serve and who ultimately gets appointed to this Board.
I saw two other hands. Supervisor McGordy.
So again, I agree with much what Supervisor Williams said. I just wonder if the scope of the Board wouldn't... of this group wouldn't change a little bit with more information, and I just don't know if we should get started and then sort of back up or... You know, I prefer to kind of get it right the first time, and even if it means waiting a couple of months to straighten everything out before we actually hit this off. I don't want to start off one direction and then have to really make some vast adjustments based on what we see compliant with the AB 1185, if that's the will of the Board. And I think most of us want to be compliant with 1185. I think that it would make sense rather than have a little bit of an orphan ordinance.
Okay, Supervisor Mulhern.
I don't know. Okay, I don't know if Supervisor Hashak wanted to comment on that specifically, but I just wanted to thank the ad hoc for bringing this back up again. I voted no on this item because I felt like it needed more clarity. So I hope that when you're reviewing what would be included, including departments, that that can be brought forward back to the Board in the ordinance and the makeup of the body as you're having additional discussions, if that's the will of the Board. Thank you.
Supervisor Hashak.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that 1185 wasn't in place when the ad hoc made their recommendation for this ordinance, and it went to County Council. I think 1185 was passed in November, and we had submitted it before that. Supervisor Williams?
I thought it was September.
Well, anyway.
At any rate, we weren't aware of the legislation. That's for sure. So I just want to... We can sort of button this up. So it sounds like the majority of the Board would prefer to hold off on the second reading and direct this 1185 referral to County Council. I feel like there probably should be one or two Board members who are speaking with County Council at the same time because it looks to me when I read the law, it looks like there are options... There's more than one way to implement 1185. For example, you could have a full-time county attorney, which would have a significant cost, or you could have a part-time attorney that might be retired without complex interest. I mean, there's a number of ways to implement 1185. And, you know, what's affordable and manageable within Mendocino County, I think, is kind of the key issue. But that's my interpretation. So I think it would be best if we had two supervisors working with County Council to bring something back. And we could have Supervisor Hashak and myself. We could have Supervisor Hashak and another supervisor do that work. What would the Board like to see?
Are you two willing to serve again?
Certainly, I am, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say for consistency, it makes sense for the two of you just to continue on because you've already proven you have a track record and you work well together. So I think that would be the way to go.
That would be fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well then, then this item will be referred to County Council with Supervisor Hashak and I meeting on behalf of the Board with County Council to develop options to bring back to the Board at the soonest possible meeting. Looking to County Council, does that suffice for our dealing with item 4H today?
Yes, I think we may need just a motion to table the adoption of the ordinance.
Supervisor Hashak.
I move that we table the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Can we have... We took public comment on... Did we take public comment on consent calendar?
I don't believe that's happened yet.
Okay, do we have any public comment on item 4H?
No, we do not.
All right, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Supervisor Mulhern.
Well, I'm sorry, Chair. I'm not sure that we had a motion for the full consent calendar. I wanted to let you know that I would be abstaining on voting for the minutes for A, B, and C because I wasn't present.
Yeah, so we're... I think at the moment, we're just voting on 4H being tabled.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Okay, so Supervisor Mulhern.
I think you're muted.
Supervisor Mulhern.
Or Alice.
Supervisor McGordy.
Yes.
Supervisor Hashak.
Yes.
Chair Jurdie.
Yes.
Supervisor Williams.
Yes.
And Supervisor Mulhern.
Yes.
Okay, and then on the remainder of the consent calendar, are there... I'm sorry, did we have any other items to be polled for discussion? Supervisor Mulhern did want to record that she was abstaining on some items that preceded her being on the Board. Alice, did you capture that?
Yes, I did. A, B, and C.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the remainder of the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Second. Can we call the roll?
Supervisor Hashak.
Yes.
Chair Jurdie.
Yes.
Supervisor Williams.
Yes.
Supervisor McGordy.
Yes.
And Supervisor Mulhern. Supervisor Mulhern.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. I believe that takes us to item 5A, which is discussion of COVID update.
Chair Jurdie, this is CEO Angelo. I'm waiting to see that we have all of our pandemic team on, and they're coming. We have Dr. Corin. We have DOC Manager Becky Emery, and we should have Darcy Antill coming on. Yes, there we go. Okay, so thank you. So the key issues that you will hear about today, of course, will be an update on pandemic response, what the numbers are. Dr. Corin will share with you what's been happening, the numbers, the outbreaks. Ms. Emery will give you an update on the Department Operations Center and how we are responding. And we have two key areas at this point in time that we are very much focused on and attempting to improve upon. One, of course, is vaccines, all things vaccines. And we do have a challenge, as every other county does in this state, in getting enough vaccine. And at this point in time, we don't have enough. The state is not increasing our allocation, and we continue to fight for the same allocation. So you'll hear a little more about that. The challenge of public information dissemination when we don't know if we're getting vaccine or not and not wanting to put messages out that we're having mass vaccination clinics if we don't know that we're getting the vaccine. So it's extremely challenging and I'm sure frustrating for this Board and frustrating for the public. Additionally, we're in the process of data reconciliation with the vaccines, which is taking a tremendous amount of effort. The effort is not the problem. We have effort in everything we do. The issue is that we have no control over the data entry when we distribute vaccine to community partners and they do not input into the state data system. That's what the state uses to determine county allocation. So it becomes a major issue. So you'll hear a little bit more about that. And Chair Jurdie, at this time, I would like to turn this over to Dr. Corin. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Corin.
Thank you, Chair Jurdie, rest of the Board of Supervisors, CEO Carmel Angelo. Today, we are still suffering from a huge pandemic in the United States. The number of cases is over 27 million. Deaths are now over 464,000, which is up 10% in the last two weeks. In California, our cases are up to 3,346,000, and deaths are over 44,000. In Mendocino County, our average daily new cases is now 20.14. It is definitely trending down. It fluctuates a little bit between 20 and 25, but basically we're slowly going decreasing. Our seven-day test positivity rate is 7.38. The state's positivity rate is 5.6. This has risen up in Eric County, and I believe it's mostly because of a decrease in testing frequency that people are doing since the holidays and now possibly because they're influenced by the vaccines coming out. Our total cases in this county have reached 3,601, of whom 1,822 are Latino. In isolation currently are 195, and quarantined are 278 citizens. Our deaths now in the county from coronavirus totaled 39. In the hospital, there are six in MedSurge. One is transferred from Tulare County. We have three in the intensive care unit and one in intensive care unit out of county, including one pediatric patient in UC Davis in an ICU who is there for a major traumatic injury, but was found to be COVID-positive. We have two... And that is one of two Mendocino residents who are out of county. Mendocino County remains in Tier 1, the purple tier, so there are no changes in current restrictions. Outbreaks include jail, which has numbered altogether over 140 people. We are now testing twice a week. There were no new positives on February 4th. Another outbreak is in Covelo Round Valley with 33 cases, and they have tested over the weekend. In Fort Bragg, seven restaurants have been involved with 15 people tested positive over a two-week period. There was a lot of noncompliance with our contact investigators, and that in addition to this being a complex outbreak involving multiple institutions. The notice and the recognition of this as one outbreak was not immediate. In Mountain View, there has just broken out a outbreak that involves so far 18 cases. And we are involved in giving them some technical advice and getting them into a program of twice-weekly binex testing. The causes are still predominantly community spread due to gatherings, failure to mask, and social distancing. Testing in this county, as I alluded to above, is decreasing. It is really too early to relax. Testing is what allows us to do the contact investigation and tracing. We have had over 50 cases earlier in the week. Yesterday, we had just a little over 20. But we need to track these regularly in order to catch up with and stop these outbreaks. Statewide testing has also been low, and they are testing for the variants that are from the mutations. And we are now seeing some more, but none of the more virulent and vaccine-resistant viruses from South Africa. There have been variants found resistant to the... Where in South Africa, the variant was found resistant to the AstraZeneca vaccine. Vaccines in Mendocino County is doing very well getting out the vaccines with about 11,163 first doses administered as of January 29th. That does not include the pharmacy contract. So that number is about 15.9% of the population over 18 years old here. And we have also vaccinated over 70% of our school staff. At this time, the hospital and their clinics and our rural health partners are focusing on vaccinating those people who are over 75 years old. For those people whose primary care providers are not vaccinators, Dr. Chan has spoken with them, and they are referring their patients to Adventist Health for vaccination. The clinics and Adventist Health will call those patients who are eligible and register them for the vaccine. The County Health Department and Community Rural Health Centers are focused on vaccinating those with occupational exposures, IHHS and school personnel, as well as agricultural and food service workers, since they are exposed and represent some of the most vulnerable people, and they are also predominantly from the Latino population who are most affected by this pandemic in our community. These are referred generally to our mass vaccine events, and also the clinics each have their own vaccine events, and they're calling their patients in who fit these categories. Recently, the national pharmacies have completed vaccinating our four nursing homes. They still have yet to complete the long-term care and residential care facilities that have signed up with them. The county's safe vaccination events now scaled up to do 200 to 300 people in a day. And we estimate that with all of the clinics, hospitals, and public health events, we have the capacity to administer 7500 to 10,000 vaccines per week. Problem again is supply. And we're trying to do this reconciliation in our county so that statewide, when they move to a third-party administrator, we are prepared to get on board with that. The CDPH has thrown us some curveballs with not having enough access to understanding what the multi-county entities are doing or the pharmacies. And they have given those two entities quite a bit more vaccines at this point than the county. Our guidelines recently have been updated, and we will be finishing nearly all of the 1A tiers. The IHHS workers are hard to bring in and to get vaccinated, so that's going to be a group that we expect will be ongoing for a while. Our new focus of education and healthcare, food and agriculture, and those over 65 from the point of view of the state. After that, we expect that the state is going to move the guidelines to focusing on age as a major characteristic for eligibility, possibly no longer including employment exposure risk. Within that group over 65, we may prioritize those with comorbidities in order to make the job a little bit more possible to get people in and not flood those numbers. The state is also looking later this week at including disabilities and comorbidities. We're getting small quantities, and that is the major obstacle to vaccinating our community. So we're encouraging everyone to be patient. We're administering our vaccines as soon as we get them in. This week, we really only have enough to do second doses. And one of the reasons for that is that we responded to the state's call to give additional doses in the week of January 13, 14, 15, when the governor wanted us to show... in the week of January 13, 14, 15, when the governor wanted us to show we had administered a million doses in a week. That came, those second doses came due this week, and we actually had to fight to get enough doses to give second doses to those people who were vaccinated. Also this week, the Supreme Court has said that religious institutions and ceremonies may now be open indoors with some restrictions, and so we'll be seeing that happen in Eric County. As far as schools, we've gotten the education sector well-vaccinated so staff can feel safe going back. Our schools are working on plans for testing, and we have provided technical assistance to them. We've worked with the schools on their safe reopening plans, and we've approved one school system and are ready to approve the other plans as they come in. They'll be required to post them. Since our cases now average less than 25 per day on average, the waived case through six schools and a few middle schools grades that were open before Thanksgiving can reopen and are planning to do so. Before the middle schools and high schools can begin to open, the state requires that the county have to be in red tier, which is less than seven cases per day for two weeks. So that's on all of us to get those case numbers down. So I just want to make sure that everybody realizes whether they're vaccinated or not, they need to mask up, keep up the social distancing, avoid gatherings, large and small, with anyone out of their household, wash up frequently, and start regularly testing again. And again, I just want to remind everyone to have patience. And I'll close my report at this point, and I think Becky and Darcy will be discussing events and the reconciliation.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Becky Emery, Department Operations Manager for Mendocino County's COVID-19 response. Our team is currently responding to four outbreaks, as Dr. Corrin shared. We do have the outbreak at Mountain View Assisted Living with 18 individuals. There are 12 residents in that outbreak and six employees that are identified, and one employee identified as a close contact that is in quarantine. I do want to share that the facility has done a great job of separating their residents to align with those best practices for COVID-19, ensuring that individuals in isolation and quarantine are separated and being cared for in an appropriate way for those efforts. They continue to work closely with our team in ensuring the safety of their staff and their residents, and as Dr. Corrin shared, they are testing their staff twice weekly. They have changed their labs, so that they are now receiving those results back within approximately 48 hours. So that's really great news, and the ability to respond quickly to those efforts. There is an outbreak in Fort Bragg, as we've shared, that involved seven restaurants with 15 positives with overlapping employees. Each of these restaurants have been contacted through various supports throughout our DOC team. They've cleaned their restaurant and are partnering with our public health in their response. And again, they are being very responsive and diligent in their efforts to ensure that they are following safety protocols for their staff and customers. We did hold outbreak testing there on Sunday from noon, 9:00 to noon, excuse me, and had more than 200 people tested at those, at that event. We do, we also have an outbreak in Round Valley with 15 positives as well from those events. It's two separate sources there. One was a memorial, and the other is a congregate group of living individuals. We had testing there as well on Saturday, February 6, and had 57 people show for those results, or for that test. We have sent both sets of testing to our Richmond lab, and we expect to have the results back on those efforts tomorrow in order to further support both communities, and we'll be responding diligently in that. We are also continuing our partnership with the jail in response to the outbreak there. They have two current positive inmates, one of which was positive at the time of detention, and the jail, the individual was tested immediately, was identified as positive, and has remained in isolation the entire time. So they have not been mixed in with the remainder of the population. That event has had a total of 145 positives, 128 of which were inmates, and 17 employees. All of the employees have been released from isolation and are listed as recovered. They are continuing, as Dr. Corrin shared, their testing twice a week in effort to mitigate further spread and respond timely and quickly to any of these events. We are continuing our Great Plates Program. I know that the contracts were approved today on consent. The program received an updated extension yesterday, extending it through March 8 of 2021. Currently, the program serves 760 individuals in partnership with seven local restaurants, and providing meals to 65 and over, or high-risk individuals in that 60 to 64 age range. To date, the program has provided more than 237,000 meals in our community and generated $5.8 million in revenue to our local restaurants. We continue to accept applications for the program and encourage members of our community, as well as interested restaurants, to apply for the program. And applications, both as a member of the community or an interested restaurant, can be obtained by calling our toll-free line at 463-7900 and asking for that Great Plates Program. We also continue to respond quickly to incidents and needs for testing. We're currently evaluating our staffing and working through transitions as we shift to vaccines and other identified areas of need, ensuring continued support to response of the COVID-19 in Mendocino County. With this change, we are also changing our posting schedule for our COVID-19 data. We'll still post our data daily, but we're going to change these daily postings to occur in early than 8:30 in the morning of the following day. So that information for today will be posted tomorrow morning by 8:30. This is in response to the significant request of continuity of service and reliability as to when our data is posted. We've heard a significant number of comments from our community stating that the varied times makes it difficult to track and know when that information is available. So we have determined that this is a very clear posting schedule and timeline to support the community for that information. Finally, we are continuing testing, surveillance testing, and absolutely encourage everyone to get tested, whether you've had the vaccine or not. In the North Coast, we have testing every Tuesday, starting at 9:00 AM at the Veterans Hall at 360 North Harrison Street, and in Ukiah, seven days a week, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, at 1055 North State Street at the Ukiah-Ridwood Empire Fairgrounds. As we continue, we are moving forward in our response, and our vaccine data will continue to be updated weekly, and we are continuing to change our processes in effort to further our efficiency, so as we don't hold daily events. So that's why it's weekly on there. And I will turn this over to Deputy CEO Darcy Antle to provide an update on our vaccine efforts.
Good morning, Chair Jordy, members of the board. I would like to start with a report regarding the vaccines clinic. So the vaccine team is working on three events for this week. These are all second doses, and at this point, all vaccine clinics within events, I'll use events, vaccine events should be using only second doses. We're waiting on first doses as our shipments, we're trying to get caught up with our shipments and the state delay in sending out our orders. We will be using SignUp Genius this week and testing MyTurn, the state system of MyTurn. We had, we were hoping to go with MyTurn this week, but we had a slight delay as the state is controlling the tiers and the phases in that. So we weren't able to apply our second dose and some of our internal controls that needed to be in place for our clinics. So again, the IT team will be with us front and center this week while we'll be testing MyTurn from the state. I want to encourage everyone that is getting a second dose, you need to go back to the location or the event where you've got your first dose. It is impossible to manage single doses. If you received your dose at a clinic in Fort Bragg or up north, you need to go back to that location for your second dose. Also, the state, as Dr. Corrin mentioned, continues to move forward with the third-party administrator for the vaccines, Blue Shield, and we are working with our county partners in the clinics, the vaccinators, as well as the state to verify the data that is going into the CARES system. The CARES system is where we report all the vaccines that we're given. This system is manual for most of us, but we are realizing that some of our clinic providers are using their EMR to interface into CARES. And to date, I have not been able to see their vaccines in that system. So we're working with the state, and we're working with the clinic to make sure that that data is integrated there, so all our doses are captured at the state level as we move forward into the next tiers and mass distribution of vaccines. That is the report. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from board members? Supervisor Williams?
Well, I have great confidence that Darcy is on it, and although there may have been some hiccups, I think we will get to the bottom of the numbers, and it'll be easier to understand going forward. The one piece of data that I have a long wish list, but the one that I would like us to correct is the vaccines per day by provider, whether it's public health or it's a third-party partner. Can we get the chronology of what's happened to date published for public benefit? And then can we start publishing per day, maybe on the dashboard, or, you know, it could be in plain text. I'm not asking for anything fancy. How many vaccines were given yesterday by which provider? And I know a lot of this will end up in CARES, but the general public doesn't have access to CARES. And I don't, when I look at, I have some of this data, and when I look at it compared to what's happening across the state and across the country, Mendocino County is doing well. We're not telling our story. We're near the top of the list, surprisingly well for a rural county. But I think the public needs to have that same data to make a determination, maybe reduce some stress that this is a national problem, the rollout, the supply chain. And yeah, people who are not yet vaccinated, who are in an eligible tier and in need, it's a really stressful time. But the county is doing a really good job getting the vaccines that do arrive in the appropriate arms in a very short period of time, generally within 48 hours. Dr. Corrin, is that, is that something you could commit to? Just, you don't have to do it yourself, but direct somebody on your staff to publish on a daily basis how many vaccines and by which provider?
I think right now, we're troubled with just getting the information to the state, and I don't want to make a commitment for this week. But I do think it's an important thing for our community to be aware of how much we've done. We're getting complimented on state calls frequently, and I think our community is filled, as most communities are, with a lot of anxiety. So I think that would be an excellent way to solve it. And I think as far as we can report and get that information out. So let me clarify, you'd like to be able to say what we've done to date as one of it?
Yes. And the trouble is, I've been asking for quite some time, and I can text Adventist right now and get an answer of what they, who they, how many they vaccinated yesterday. I can call RCMS, and I can get an answer. So, but I don't want to be publishing this information as one county supervisor. This really should come from, from staff and should be official. Is it possible to get somebody in the county to make those calls on a daily basis and just publish what they hear? And, you know, if there are mistakes, that's okay, right? You might have a clinic that is off by a few vaccines in their tally one day, but at least it would paint a general picture of, of the trend. Are we doing better over time? You may know, I may know, the general public doesn't know, other than we're telling them, trust us, we're doing a good job. They'd like to see the data.
I will turn that question over to Becky, because Becky would be the one who would get it implemented, probably Becky and Darcy. And I, and I think it's a noble idea. What do you think is the possibility?
I think it's certainly a goal we are working towards. I absolutely hear loud and clear that you want us to be able to post what all of our partners are doing as well daily. So that is something that we can look at. As I said, it is a goal. Right now, we are really focusing on making sure that the data we do have is current and accurate, and the information that we're putting out is meeting the state, you know, meeting the state requirements and guidelines as well. And so that's really where we've focused our efforts, because if our data doesn't match up with the state, it could put, you know, put us at risk down the road. We certainly want to make sure that we are first protecting our county, and I absolutely understand that you want the data and the information out there. So it is a goal. I will talk with our team and see what we can do. It is not something I think that we can make happen this week, as we're continuing our efforts in working through all of the other processes. The state is in transition for multiple systems. They have over nine systems involved in tracking all of the vaccines that we've been working through. And so that's one of the challenges, I think, that we're facing with this.
So I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues before. I don't want to give direction to staff as one supervisor. Is there general board support for publishing on a daily basis how many vaccines have taken place and by which provider? It looks like there's at least three there.
It looks like there is, and I'm just a question to Becky and/or Darcy. We do have some public information officers. Perhaps they could be brought in to help disseminate the information.
Darcy Antle, Deputy CEO, I cannot speak for the PIOs. I do know that we're establishing a connection with our clinic providers, and we can certainly work with them to get their data. Again, as Becky mentioned, it's, it's not going to be this week, but it is a goal that we can do. I know that's the goal of the state, once they move to this third-party administrator. So if we can get our data lining up and matching with them and making sure that our clinic providers are reporting into CARES, we're reporting into CARES, then we should be able to get to that report, as well as Vaccine Finder. This is another software that the state has out there for us to enter end-of-day inventory. That has not been distributed out to our clinics. We began working with them yesterday to get them signed up into Pathfinder. So again, we can manage what you're talking about, Supervisor Williams, but give us a few weeks, and we will get there. And maybe it won't be every day, but we could do it, you know, three times a week or something to that effect, definitely.
So as we've discovered, I want to work, I'm happy to do some of the legwork. And, you know, if we don't have the resources, I'm happy on a daily basis to call all of the clinics and ask, how many did you vaccinate today? And then return that to public health, if that gets us there sooner. You know, a few weeks is a long time. I think we have 90-year-olds driving across the county, in some cases, three or four hours, waiting in line, because there's panic about they're not going to get a vaccine. And I think just being able to show the data that we're increasing and we're applying everything we get from the state, and the situation will only get better, I think would reduce some of that stress. So I would rather not wait a few weeks, and I don't want to put undue pressure on staff. I know there's a lot of number-one priorities, and this may not, this may not be the top number-one priority. So I'd be willing to take it on. But I didn't, I didn't want to do it and surprise my colleagues with them wondering why is a supervisor collecting this data and publishing it?
Ted, I totally support you. I think it's a great idea, and I was going to say that I like the idea of a daily update, but not at the expense of distracting, you know, our staff that may already be overworked and a bit stressed. So if you can make that contribution, that's fantastic.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions, Supervisor Moore?
I just had a couple of things on my list for this week. One thing that I think would be helpful is if the data that Dr. Corrin mentions during his update is provided in writing, possibly if it's even uploaded to this item on the county website, just this many cases, this many deaths, whatever, the data that Dr. Corrin recites is uploaded in a, in a document. Also, I think it would really be helpful, that was a wonderful update on the Great Plates Program. But again, that's something, it would be helpful if there was a, an infographic or one sheet that's just uploaded in this document. Maybe it can be updated each month with how many restaurants and how many millions of dollars and people served. And like Supervisor Williams, I'm willing to put in the work, and if you need help creating that, I'm happy to do that. And also, And also, I think it's important that the county public health gets out to all of the vaccine locations, vaccine clinic locations, that we will accept a letter for proof of employment instead of a pay stub for some essential workers. That has been a question that has been coming up. And I think clear direction to the vaccine clinics on that would be helpful.
I would support you on that and happy to help.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
Just two comments. So the first one is, is that once again, for people who don't have internet access or work online, having a way to make appointments by phone is something that affects a lot of my clients in the first district, not only older folks, but also farmworkers sometimes have trouble accessing internet for follow-up appointments. So I don't know where you're at with that. That's a question to probably to Becky and Darcy. And the second thing is to Dr. Corin. I'm understanding that there's, people are having reactions to the second shots more than the first, that some of them are really feeling it. And I just wondered if you have any commentary and suggestions of guidelines? And I wonder if you're handing out like an information sheet for how to deal with it?
Yeah. The information sheets are distributed at each vaccine event. And they do list the side effects that people can get. I had my vaccines, and indeed, I can testify, as I'm sure a lot of the other people on this call can, that the second vaccine actually did affect me more than I've ever experienced with another. But it's still the routine types of side effects, headaches, body aches, certainly a local reaction with tenderness in the arm. Some people get a low-grade fever. This is part of any immunologic response to any vaccine. It seems to be a little bit more pronounced in my experience. There's not a lot of data to say, well, this is definitely going to happen or significantly more. I don't have data to say that. But these are not different reactions that we get from any old vaccine. It's just that it seems to be a little bit more commented about. And I wouldn't be surprised if part of that is just that it's a new vaccine. But in my personal opinion, it also seems a little bit more severe this time.
Yeah. So the comment from a couple of my friends were, don't plan anything the next day after you get your shot because you may not be up to it.
That's good advice.
Supervisor Hachek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With all this talk about, you know, signup genius and MyTurn and Vaccine Finder, Vaccinate Mendo, you know, I'm getting people saying, what do I do? You know, is there a phone number or what's the simplest way to sign up for a vaccine?
Well, what we're actually trying to effect in this community and have generally been very successful is that your group will contact you and we're keeping track. And then they're telling the vaccine events, who are the people coming in? So that, for example, when it was teachers, the schools put together lists and prioritize them, who was going to be face-to-face, the teachers, for the younger people first. And of course, maintenance people were all along. But they gave us the vax, those lists. It's happening with other work groups as well. And some of the agricultural employers are also doing that. Where it's tended to break down is around the over 75s and the age groups. And what we're, what we're trying to get going, and I think it is working, is that the Adventist Hospital and the various clinics can search their own electronic medical records and pull out lists of people that would be eligible. And they would call them in and have them come to their events, which they're having pretty regularly. The exception is those people who are patients and physicians who don't have the vaccines and don't intend to distribute the vaccine. And what we've done is we've encouraged them to put their lists together and send them over to Adventist Health Clinic that has agreed, Adventist Health that has agreed to invite them to their clinics. So that's ongoing, that's happening. But there are, you know, it's, it takes a little bit of time to get those lists together. If we have an open clinic or an open event and people just stream in, there's going to be a lot of disappointment. And if it's an event at the fairgrounds, elderly people are going to have a problem getting there and also getting across to the appropriate place. So we're trying to divide up those people who are eligible for the vaccines by virtue of their age. And those go to their medical providers. And the medical providers should be calling them in when they, when they are, when they're eligible. And those who are at risk and are eligible because of their employment and their employers will bring them in. So that's how we're trying to do it. There is a call center line to call if all else fails. It's not if all else fails, but if there are questions, and it's 472-2663, 472-2663. But really, it's probably best for folks to call their provider and be patient. If they're, if they're members of, if they're, if their providers are clinics or the Adventist Health Clinics and Hospital, those entities will be calling up their patients who qualify. And they're getting that off of their, of their electronic medical records.
Okay. And my other question is about the often-served travel team. And that team is going out to Fort Bragg, but is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So are there any of the, is the team going up to Willets at all?
Darcy Antle through the chair, Supervisor Hachek. So the traveling team's been an interesting adventure for us working with the state. The state wants us to do a 12-hour clinic wherever we set up to do the swabbing. And as you can imagine, a 12-hour clinic in Covelo or Leightonville or even on the south coast, it's a lot of, a lot of staff time to get there to set up and maybe not the population there to serve for 12 hours. So we are working with the state to try and do two clinics per day, such as going to Point Arena in the morning and then moving up to Anderson Valley in the afternoon. And that was what we were doing. The state put a stop to that because it did not fit into their criteria and their contracting with LHI and Optum. I'm in communications with them, as most recently as yesterday, trying to reconcile this, this issue and tell them that the state format is not conducive to smaller, rural, very diverse counties such as Mendocino County.
Well, thank you. So the answer is, it's not going to be coming to Willets in the near future. Is that?
If he gives me the go-ahead, we'll be there next week, but I have to have the state approval to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
So my question has to do with, with the public sheltering in place, or many people are sheltering in place and, and, you know, receiving additional parcels delivered to their homes. The question is, where do parcel carriers fall in the vaccination scheme of things? Because whether they work for the post office, UPS, or FedEx, my understanding that they're, they're making record deliveries to people right now. They're sort of, sort of at the level of where they would normally be during the holidays. But here we are in March and they're still making that level of deliveries. So where do, how, how soon are they receiving vaccines?
So the guidelines have initially put them in the tier two B or C. And that has been shaken up now by the state's directives that they're going to go by age. But then today I saw memo that they're actually going to be considering looking at comorbidities. So I'm not sure that they're going to fall into a special employment category. I would say that with the type of work that they're doing, although they're making, they're doing record work and they are essential, they're not coming into a lot of direct contact that would put them in occupational risk. So that's one of the reasons that they're not at an elevated level.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
On my line, we have Anna Stokel.
Hi again. My comment is related to the frustration of disclosure of information, which I'm actually happy to hear was discussed in the meeting, but not happy with the results. The Board of Supervisors complained endlessly about the state not disclosing data, but quite frankly, Mendocino County isn't doing much better. I tune into these meetings to get more information. I find it disappointing that half of Dr. Corin's report is straight out of the national news and he never has a professional and formatted report with graphics. It seems like he is just winging it every meeting. I am not a doctor, but I could have given the same report. I also don't understand why the CEO and Dr. Corin is the one on the phone trying to get his vaccines. It doesn't seem like he has any involvement whatsoever. Supervisor Williams is and has been carrying most of the load on Facebook. He hit the nail on the head with his earlier comment on this. We all appreciate his efforts, but it's still difficult to get answers to specific questions. I almost fell over listening to this meeting and hearing daily updates to the public would be a distraction to the staff. I don't know what you're thinking. I have seen questions from people in their 70s and older not to know how to get vaccines go unanswered. This seems to be a job for the Mendocino County Public Health. Why is it they did not disclose, and why is it they did not disclose the Fort Bragg restaurant outbreaks for many days until they had already been dealt with and reopened the restaurants? We needed to hear that information as soon as you heard it. Vaccination information should be available to us in the same format as the graphic that comes out for the cases every day. We need a stacked bar graph to see who's getting vaccinations, if they've had one or two, and by demographic. We want to see high-risk and frontline workers, but also we want to see the demographic that is keeping us in the purple tier and keeping Mendocino local business owners and workers closed and keeping our students out of school. Finally, my last question I can't get answered is, how is all this information being given to the people who don't have access to Zoom and Facebook and the internet? I can't get answers to that either. It's been an exercise in frustration trying to find out what's going on.
This concludes public comment for this item.
All right. Well, that takes us to item 5B, which is discussion of possible action, including introduction and way first reading of ordinance, submitting chapter 2.48 Mendocino County Code regarding composition of planning commission.
Mr. Chair, so this is the, this is the proposed ordinance that the board had asked me to go ahead and draft and to prepare for the board's consideration. I believe that we captured everything that was in the intent in the prior meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about it.
I do want to say that after the meeting, I got some feedback that during the meeting, I believe there was a new concept introduced about adding alternates to the planning commission. I could be remembering incorrectly, but I don't think it was part of the original proposal that was on the agenda. And the feedback I got was, they're not so sure it's so, it's a necessary step and that it could complicate things in that you have now two people that need to be monitoring issues because if someone is unable to hear the item on a second hearing, sometimes items take more than one meeting to address. So basically some general reservations with the concept of, of having alternates on the planning commission and wondering if it's, if it's maybe addressing a problem that doesn't exist, that, you know, we might not need to have alternates in order to have a quorum. So has anyone else received any kind of comments like that? Supervisor Williams?
I received the same feedback that it's, the idea is well-intentioned and we're trying to create efficiency, but actually we may be creating a new problem that's worse than having to skip a meeting because we can't find a quorum. Because you, you know, you have two different people who may not be totally aligned. One hearing the first half and then the other hearing the second half. The feedback I've gotten is, don't do it. It's, it'll, it'll create more conflict.
Supervisor Hachek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my conversations with the county council and staff who deal with the planning commission, they said that it's very rare or not, it's not common for items be carried over so that there shouldn't be a real conflict in one person hearing one part of it and another person, you know, the alternate, if that were the case, hearing the other part. I think that what the, obviously the intent is to make sure that we have a planning commission that's functioning properly and, you know, isn't canceled because of lack of quorums.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I do want the board to be aware, so in the context in particular of use permits or any sort of other quasi-judicial hearing, there would be limitations on the ability to substitute in an alternate for the second half of a continued hearing. So I do think that there need to be some, some rules and parameters around that because essentially you can't have someone voting on the item who hasn't heard the entire item. It would create some, some potential due process issues. So I don't, I don't know that that's an insurmountable hurdle, but if the, the board did decide to leave the alternates in place, I think that we'd have to have a rule that essentially prohibited someone who hadn't heard the first half of the item from voting on, on a continued hearing.
Supervisor Hachek?
And that sounds fine with me. If, if we can, I guess it's a question for county council, do we add that in now or is that something that the commission can deal with?
If I may respond to the chair, the, the rule already exists in law. It's a due process concept. So I think it would just be a matter of having the, the commission be trained on that and having a, possibly a formally adopted rule as part of their bylaws or procedures that's just clear on that. I don't know that it needs to go in the ordinance itself.
Well, so I'll just say, based on the feedback I received, I would prefer to amend the ordinance, but, but not incorporate at this time alternates and to see if the planning commission is having difficulty establishing a quorum. If that turns out to be the case, then we could revisit the issue of, of having alternates. I think it's, it's creating a, you know, five new alternates and we may not have a need for those alternates. Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes, Chair Dootie. I would support that with the, that we could bring it back in one year to see how it's going to have the discussion again. So next January or next February.
Supervisor Hachek?
And that would be fine with me, too.
Mr. Chair, if the board is going to go that direction, I would just suggest for efficiency and expediency, if we could come back to this item at the end of the day, I could have staff have an updated draft uploaded to the agenda. And I think that that'll satisfy our notice obligations and be clear to everyone as to what action the board is taking.
With that, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to item 5B later this afternoon. And we do have quite a few other things on the agenda today. Do we have any public comment at this time that, for item 5B?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
First up is Devin Jones.
Good morning, this is Devin Jones with the Mendocino County Farm Bureau. I was directed by my board to call in this morning to reiterate the position that we sent in last week in opposition of the removal of the two at-large seats from the planning commission. We had some significant disagreement with some of the positions that were put forward in terms of the rationale for those removals of those seats, and there were several comment letters that were submitted, also not in favor of the action of removing those two at-large seats from the commission. So now that that action seems to be moving forward, and the discussion today also includes the removal of potential alternates, I think it is more important than ever to really affirm the fact that if this board is reducing the planning commission to a five-seat commission, then those appointees, one representative for each of those supervisory districts, need to take the commitment seriously. We shouldn't be talking about an attendance issue, we should really be focusing on making sure that the five individuals who are appointed are going to have the commitment and the willingness to participate to the best of their ability, emergencies aside. So that's some concern that if this is coming back for later today, have that in mind. And the other thing that needs to be discussed as well is for those two commissioners that are no longer going to be present for the forestry and agricultural seat, is knowing that those individuals also sat on other boards as appointed through their responsibilities with the commission. One that comes to mind is the Airport Land Use Commission. So those other responsibilities need to be considered, and now there'll be vacancies as well on those additional boards that the supervisors should be considering in terms of appointment from the planning commission as it moves forward. So again, we are not in favor of moving forward with only a five-person planning commission, and we are opposed to the action that's related to this. Thank you.
Next, we have Ron Edwards.
Yes, good morning, board. I wanted to make sure, can you hear me? Yes, I'm here. Okay. I wanted to make sure that when we're going through the process, that it's clear for people who want to apply for a board seat, know the procedures. Will each supervisor be holding public meetings, or will they just be appointing people? I think there should be some public input, since it is limiting the number of seats going down to five, that each area of the county should have a strong representation in the appointment of these people. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Okay. That takes us then to five, I believe it takes us to 5C at this point. Which is discussion and possible action on a tax refund.
Mr. Chair, we could, we could proceed with this item if this time the board desires, or we could potentially break and go to closed early. I know that we have a pretty lengthy closed session agenda at this time.
I would prefer if staff feels that we can go to closed session at this point, I would prefer to go to closed session, we have a number of items. Okay, so then we would go to the tax items in the afternoon, is that the plan?
I believe that would be appropriate. We're seeing a lot of nods here in the room.
Okay. All right, well, then we will go into closed session, we have a number of items. County Council, do we need to list off all the items, or do we just simply list them off when we report out in the afternoon?
I would suggest just briefly mentioning the items as agendized on the posted agenda.
Okay, am I doing that, or are you doing that?
I would just say that, you know, this would be nine, items 9A, 9B, 9C, 9D, 9E, 9F, and 9G.
Okay. Supervisor Hachak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this means that we won't be coming back to public session, in open session, until 1:30?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll see y'all in three or four minutes in closed session.
Chair Jurdie?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Atlas Pearson Deputy Clerk of the Board. Staff would like to request a 10-minute break prior to going into closed session.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll reconvene in closed session at 10:00, 10:30. 2:55, we are re-entering into open session. We had seven items in closed session, items 9A, 9B, 9C, 9D, 9E, 9F, and 9G, and on all items, direction was given to staff. And with that, I believe we are ready to go into item 5C, which is discussion and possible action, including approval of tax refund and claim amount of $4,200 to Karen Calvert. There are two related items, are these going to be held at the same time, or sequentially?
Mr. Chair, I believe you have discretion on that. You may want to hear from, I believe it's the same attorney for both applicants, you may want to hear from Mr. Johnson as to whether he has a preference on that.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, would you like to address both items concurrently or sequentially?
I would, I would be able to address them either, in either fashion. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If it's all right with you, I think it might be more expedient if we address both items 5C and 5D at the same time.
Okay, that'll be fine. So just to give you an overview, my clients, Karen Calvert and James Calvert, have requested taxed refunds for the payments that they have made to the Albion Little River Fire Protection District Measure M tax. Specifically, the refund is for the fact that their real property is not located within the district, and that it's illegal to levy taxes against that real property. The reason that it's not part of the district is that it is commercial timberland that is in a state responsibility area, and there's been litigation on this issue, which I believe the county's aware of, that is now state precedent, which establishes that a fire district does not include commercial timberland within a state responsibility area. My clients have requested the amounts of $4,220.40 for Karen Calvert, and for James Calvert, a refund of $5,118.64. Ms. Gross, who's the attorney for the fire district, wrote a letter to the county on December 4th, 2020, in which she appears to not take issue with the fact that my clients are entitled to a refund. I hereby request that the amounts listed be refunded. I also request that the county agree to refund any subsequent amounts that have been paid since this tax refund request was initially filed in January of 2020. And I also request that the county and the district remove my clients from the tax roll as it applies to Measure M. I'd be happy to address any issues, since they're, based on conversations that I've had with Ms. Gross and Mr. Curtis, I don't know exactly what the position is as far as the county's concerned. If there is some opposition, or there is some issue that needs to be addressed, I'll be happy to address it, but apparent, the way it appears, that there is no opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. County Council Christian Curtis, do you have anything to add at this time?
Just very, very briefly, since we have two new board members, and I know the board hasn't done this all this often, just so everyone understands the context by statute, the Board of Supervisors is charged with hearing the tax refund claims in the first instance. In this particular case, the tax that was imposed is not one that was imposed by the county, it was imposed by the local district. The claim is that the district, or that these particular properties were not actually in the district, and therefore, the tax should not have been collected from them. The only factual question is whether or not the properties in question are commercial timberland. If they are commercial timberland, then in fact, they wouldn't be within the bounds of the district under existing law, and refund would be appropriate. I will let the board know with respect to Mr. Johnson's request, that the tax be removed from the rolls, that's, I think that's actually a little bit outside of the board's role in this proceeding, it would just be ordering the refund, although obviously, we would go ahead and make the tax collector and the auditor aware of what had happened, so that they can adjust things appropriately going forward. And I understand that Ms. Gross was planning to appear, I don't believe that she is here. She, in prior communication to me, I will just represent, she didn't indicate that she had anything in particular to present, she just wanted to be, wanted the applicants to go ahead and present their case to the board.
Okay, so for clarification, the attorney representing the Albion Little River Fire Department is not present this afternoon?
Oh, sorry, that is my understanding from Clerk of the Board. That being said, we did confirm that she was given the link to appear here, and was notified of the time.
Okay. Supervisor Williams?
So I think Mr. Johnson is right, and I support the recommended action here. The court has made a determination, and this is, this is the correct path. The fire district tried to resolve a longstanding problem that a pager goes off, and firefighters don't know what properties qualify and what don't, which are taxpaying and which are not. And if you look at the bounds that LAFCO has drawn around districts, you know, it's, these parcels would be inside the bounds, you would think they're part of the district and to provide response. And then practically, there's a fire, first water is best water, it will be the volunteers throughout the county, except our cities, that show up first. There's, there's great periods of time when CAL FIRE is either not stationed in the winter, or in the fire season, they're off fighting a fire like they should be, pooling resources where they need resources most. So I think that although this is the right action, and we need to follow the direction of the court, there's a, there's a problem that the district tried to address that the county really needs to take up, and it may be forming a tighter partnership with the state to ensure that as they boost the funding for CAL FIRE, that they also look after the fire districts, which will be on scene first. And even when state firefighters show up, it'll be the local districts initially that are shuttling water, they have those water trucks, and they have the water tanks. And we're asking residents to pick up the tab on, on the support for protecting commercial timberland, quite frankly. So I would recommend, in addition to approving this, that we refer the general problem in the abstract to the General Government Committee to see, see if we can work with the state on better funding the fire districts for this purpose, given that the fire districts are not able to tax all of the land within their boundaries.
Okay. Would you like to make that, is that, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Mr. Johnson, do you have any, any further comments?
No, I don't have any comments at this point, other than to request the potential refund of, of funds that have been paid on the tax after this tax refund request was made.
Okay, to the maker of the motion, it, it could be that additional taxes were paid beyond what was listed in the initial appeal, do you include that in your motion?
Yeah, I think it's inherent, whatever taxes that were collected, that according to the court ruling need to be refunded, the intention is to refund.
Okay. And a second, or the motion concurs? Supervisor Mulhern, you concur with that clarification?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Can you call the roll?
Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Hachak?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Chair Jurdie?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. That brings us to item 5E, which is discussion and possible action, including introduction and way first reading of an ordinance creating a Mendocino County Code 8.77, providing for the abatement of hazardous vegetation and combustible material to reduce fire hazards. And this was direction to the county council's office, can we have presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'd like to turn it over to Deputy County Counsel Mike Mactacy to go ahead and present to this item.
Good morning, Chair Jurdie, Board of Supervisors, CEO Angelo, County Counsel Curtis. I'm Deputy County Counsel Michael Mactacy. On December 15th, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to make certain changes to the proposed ordinance to create Chapter 8.75, which is providing for the abatement of hazardous vegetation and combustible material to reduce fire hazards. We made those changes, and we're bringing this back to you today for a second first reading. Prior to December 15th, 2021, excuse me, 2020, the idea for this ordinance originated through the work of former Supervisor Brown, who worked with Scott Craddy from the Fire Safe Council to create the first draft. From there, they worked with county council's office to develop polished version, which was presented in mid-December. Because former Supervisor Brown is no longer on the board, and because of the changes that were directed in the December were fairly straightforward, county council is presenting this item to you today. At the meeting in December, former Supervisor Brown, followed by Scott Craddy, introduced this item and explained the reasons behind and the need for this legislation. I'm not going to go through that portion of the presentation, but instead, I'd like to briefly and objectively review what this ordinance does and what changes were made since December. So in short, this ordinance responds to the desire to have an additional mechanism which can be implemented by the county to address fire nuisances caused by hazardous vegetation. As such, this ordinance designates the maintenance of hazardous vegetation and combustible material on real property as a public nuisance. It empowers the building official to declare it a nuisance, and utilizes existing enforcement mechanisms to enforce the ordinance. This ordinance is flexible, it allows for as much or as little enforcement as resources permit. In December, when we discussed this on the 15th, part of the discussion was about the availability of resources, and it's worth noting again that this law was designed to provide the basic structure with the knowledge that right now, no resources have been currently allocated to enforce this law. The ability to carry out this law will depend in part on either a priority setting by the board, or an allocation of resources for the purpose of enforcing the law. As for the changes from December- As for the changes from December, they were fairly minimal. They are reflected in the red line. So I took what was presented on the 15th, and I provided a red line to you in your agenda packet, which reflects the changes that are being presented today at the direction of the board, which were primarily based on public comment. They were mostly targeted at the definitions with a minor modification to the descriptive language and the corrective actions. Other than that, John Burks from Code Enforcement is on the line. So is Planning Building Interim Director Nash Gonzalez and the Building Official Mike Oliphant. All of us are happy to answer any questions you might have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Supervisor Hashak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Farm Bureau had some concerns, and so the modifications that you made, take into consideration those concerns?
Through the chair. That's my understanding. On the 15th of December, the Farm Bureau had written a letter explaining their concerns, and they called in and gave their comment. Based on that comment, the board directed to have changes made, and these are the changes that were agreed. I've been checking the website as early as this morning. I have not seen any further correspondence from the Farm Bureau. I don't know if they're going to call in or not. I haven't heard any opposition to what's being presented.
Okay. And I just think that the big issue is going to be the enforcement and how much we put into it. I do think that PG&E money might come in helpful, useful for this purpose.
Any other board questions or comments at this time? Supervisor McGordy?
So if I understand this, since I wasn't here during its genesis, if I understand this correctly, it's primarily kind of for places like the east halls of Ucaya, where you may have a property owner who is in close proximity to other buildings or dwellings, where it might be not tended properly so as to minimize the possibility of fire? Is that correct?
Through the chair. I, right now, I wish either former Supervisor Brown or Scott Craddy was on the line, because they are the ones who originally discussed this and created the first draft of this ordinance. My understanding is that it's not specific to any one particular area. The way that this is going to work, it's going to apply to the entire county, focused in on built areas. So defensible space, areas around roads, rights of ways, public utilities. It's basically an additional mechanism that is aimed in large part to help enforce the rules that already exist around fire prevention, such as the enforcement of defensible space, wherever that might be in the county.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hashak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think that a huge part of this is that wildlands urban interface, where the wildlands are coming up to neighborhoods. And so it's a way of dealing with some of those issues, too.
Well, and I would just briefly add, on the coast in the 4th District, in the vicinity of the town of Casper, there's an invasive weed called gorse. It's a brush, and it's very flammable due to the oil in the plant, and it's difficult to get rid of. And there are examples of absentee landlords who own a piece of property, the gorse takes over, and the neighbors who live year-round on adjacent parcels have fire concerns. And this ordinance may well help Code Enforcement address those absentee landlords. So I know it may be hard to believe, but on the coast, this is also an issue, even though we're not nearly as dry as parts of the Redwood Valley, Potter Valley, 1st District. Do we have any other board questions or comments? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do.
On the line is Carrie Brown.
Um, this is Carrie Brown.
Welcome, Carrie.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Atlas. Yes, I'm on the line and want to encourage the Board of Supervisors to approve this first reading. I think it's important. Calls from constituents, not just in the 1st District, they were from all over. Mr. Scott Craddy, through the Fire Council, has connected with the Fire Chiefs countywide, as well as the council itself, and they're very supportive. And I did receive compliments from different neighborhoods, communities throughout the entire county for bringing this forward. And hopefully, when you get into the budget hearings, we're going to allocate funding for enforcement. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Next on the line is Devin Jones.
Good afternoon. Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. We appreciate the red line changes that were presented to you today for this first reading, based on a lot of the comments we submitted back in December. We think that the clarification to some of those definitions will alleviate some of the concerns brought forward by our membership in terms of, you know, where this specific ordinance may be enforced for the specific purpose of, you know, improving upon defensible space around homes, structures, rights of ways, access roads, et cetera. So I just wanted to call in and voice our appreciation for those changes that were made.
Next is Anna Stokel.
Hi, Anna Stokel here. Mr. McDeeshi, you should be, or Deeshi, sorry. I don't know how to pronounce your name, because I've never seen it other than the emails, but I'm sure you're familiar with me. This is just another example of extreme Mendocino County government overreach. There is no reason that I in Cleone have to be subject to more county code when there is no historical data to support this where I live. First, before you wave your wand over passing more code, there needs to be community outreach and training, or I don't know if training is the best word, but letting people know what a defensible space is and working with the residents, and perhaps getting them some help financially to clear out their space if it's required. Not everybody can afford to live under the thumb of all of your regulations, even though most of us are very well-intentioned. So I would like to see this not passed. It's not, it doesn't, just like Sacramento laws don't apply unilaterally to all of California, your code does not apply unilaterally well to all of Mendocino County. This is just another piece of code that will hurt me on my piece of property in Cleone where it is not necessary. I, please use community outreach first and see how that goes before you sign another piece of code into law. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Supervisor Hashak?
Well, I'll move the action.
I would second it.
Okay. We have motion and second. Any final comments on the item? Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Atlas caller that in general, there's too much regulation. In a lot of cases, we create outlaws out of otherwise law-abiding citizens who, you know, can't afford to do everything that they need to do, whether it's building codes or clearing brush. The other side of it is, we saw a fire run all the way to Jenner. Even in Little River, I've been to wildland fires right up against the ocean. The weather isn't what it was 30 years ago. And I think while the risk is more inland, we are seeing it towards the coast as a countywide problem. And, you know, I think if you look at Carrie's district, I appreciate her calling in. You know, you have people that were really threatened by past fires, and there isn't much option on the table but to do better defensible space clearing. That clearing isn't just to save the property, it's to stop the fire from spreading on those properties to neighbors. So I support it. As much as I don't want to see more regulation, I think this is life-saving.
Supervisor McGordy?
As a botanist, you need to realize that most of the coast is actually a fire climax community. It's designed botanically to burn, and some species don't even regenerate very much, unlike the bishop pine unless they encounter a fire. So we're all prone to fire. And I think most people are pretty good at taking care of their own places. And I think there's neighbors who are kind of sensitive and aware of people who can't get things done, like me. And I've mowed neighbors' property before, because I have a nice big tractor and a wide mower. And when they've needed help, I reach out and help them. So I think there is a pretty good volunteer effort. And with the Firesafe Council's Scott Craddy and from the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District is looking for grant opportunities to help in this. And it's a very serious problem that I think is a huge existential threat to Mendocino County, especially the 1st District is just burned, and the 3rd District as well has some serious fires in the last few years. All of Mendocino County has, and it's just something that we need to be on top of and proactive about. We need to be thinking about stopping fires before they start, rather than putting all of our resources into putting out fires once they get going. So I think that this is totally a step in the right direction.
All right. Can you call the roll?
Sure thing. Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor Hashak?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Chair Jurdie?
Yes.
And Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. That brings us to item 5G, which is discussion of possible action, including introduce first, introduce and wait first reading of an ordinance mending Section 10A, 15A, 30, the Mendocino County Code modifying certain definitions related to genetically modified organisms. This is also by county council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe we're getting Deputy County Counsel Matt Kudrowski into the meeting right now.
Good afternoon, board. This is Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. This item is doing some cleanup work from last year. On February 26th, 2019, the board adopted an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of GMOs. And this was done to try and fill in gaps that people had found from the original Measure H from 2004. On February 25th, 2020, the board adopted ordinance number 4459, which added new Chapter 10A.15A to the Mendocino County Code and gave direction to staff to work with interested parties regarding certain modifications to the definitions. Staff outreach with interested parties during 2020 regarding the concerns of the definitions that were initially adopted in February of last year. After several rounds of proposed revisions, staff believes the definitions as modified resolved the concerns raised in February of last year. They've been reorganized for clarity, include minor changes for better scientific accuracy, and specify that while certain stated techniques are not themselves genetic engineering, if those techniques are used with GMOs, that technique is considered genetic engineering. I will note that unfortunately, this item did not have, the red line was not showing for the version posted last week to this item. We fixed that yesterday afternoon. So the PDF that is now up as item attachment number two is a PDF with red lines there. And just to go through the changes briefly, since they weren't more readily viewable before today, the definition of DNA has been modified for accuracy, that this is not a protein, it's nucleic acid. Definition C regarding GMO now includes both same species and non-species, specific DNA, in terms of things that would modify, will be considered genetically modified organisms. And definition D for genetic engineering has been modified to make sure that reads more correctly with the various techniques that are listed, as well as the provision at the end of the sentence, or at the end of the paragraph, regarding the use of GMOs and techniques does constitute genetic engineering, as well as a revision to the definition of organism. If there's any questions, both I and Jim Donnelly are available. And with that, this would be first reading.
Supervisor Williams?
Can you talk about how it's enforced? How is the violation detected? And what is the enforcement procedure?
So Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. So either on this version of the ordinance or prior Measure H, I'm not sure exactly how much enforcement the Ag Department had done. And I will look to Mr. Donnelly for further discussion.
In the past, we've sent out notifications to anyone we thought could be in violation of the ordinance. I can consult with Deputy County Counsel McDeeshi if you would like. I think if it was a public nuisance, there's other things we could do. But at this time, we're pretty limited on our ability for enforcement.
Perhaps we could have a follow-up presentation from Code Enforcement the next time they're presenting to give more detailed answer to that question?
Yeah, that would work for me. It doesn't have to be today. I just have a sense we're passing something that, you know, there could be violations, and we wouldn't know. And if we did, we wouldn't necessarily do anything about it. And I would love to hear from Supervisor McGordy, given that he's more of an expert.
I'm not a great geneticist. I would say on definition B of DNA, where it talks about it being the blueprint for the organism's development, that's partially true. DNA makes up chromosomes. The chromosomes are the real blueprint. Such as, I'm not going to quibble about this, but it's a small issue. And I'm just curious to, to, to Ag Commissioner Donnelly, if there's ever been a case or complaint brought since the ordinance was instated. Has there been any action taken?
Since I've been here, the only complaints we could improve were founded, and they were within the city. And this was a county ordinance. So we didn't think it, because all of the county council, we didn't think it was appropriate to intervene with the city's jurisdiction. I haven't, prior to my time, I'm not aware of any other issue other than Tony Linegar occasionally would send out notices to nurseries and to seed producers.
So my understanding basically is that in Mendocino County, most of our organisms that we have, most of our plants that we grow are not genetically modified. And, you know, we don't have Roundup-ready grapevines, and I hope to God we never do. We already have enough trouble with inappropriate use of some of these herbicides that have built up resistant weed populations. So I, but the only implication I could see possibly is in the cannabis industry, because what we're likely to see GMOs is more likely in annual crops. So I, and I don't know if anybody monitors that, or if we even know if there are any clones or selections that are GMOs.
Supervisor Hashak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Supervisor McGordy, part of the reason for the update of this ordinance was because of the cannabis industry and this CRISPR technology coming in, and people thinking that CRISPR was outside of the old ordinance. So that's the update reason for it.
Okay. Thank you.
If we don't have other board member questions or comments at this time, I'd like us to go to any public comment we may have.
We do have public comment.
First on the line is Michael Katz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, this is Michael Katz. I'm the Executive Director of the Mendocino Cannabis Alliance. Thank you so much, Supervisors, for hearing this topic today. As the letter that we had sent in in coordination with our strategic partner Origins Council and the Willett's Environmental Center indicates, we support the proposed ordinance and recommended action and respectfully request your support for this item. We strongly support the intent of Measure H to protect the county's agriculture, environment, economy, and private property from genetic pollution by genetically modified organisms. And in light of subsequent advances in genetic engineering and market applications, we really appreciate this effort to close any legal loopholes that would undermine the intent of Measure H, which we believe this ordinance accomplishes. Thank you so much for your consideration of this.
Next on the line is Ellen Drell.
Hello, this is Ellen Drell. I submitted a voice, a voice communication as well, but I will, you can, you can bypass that. And I will just read what I've written here. On behalf of the Willett's Environmental Center, as Michael Katz said, and myself personally, I urge you to adopt this ordinance. It will serve to protect and maintain the intent of Measure H, which was the voter initiative, as you remember, that made Mendocino County the first county in the country to declare its agricultural products would be as nature might create them and free of genetically engineered organisms and novel genetic material. This fact has added to Mendocino County's reputation for natural, healthy, dependable, and predictable products. It creates a solid foundation, we think, for a sustainable agricultural economic base, which I know all of you value. The Capital Press, a newspaper that covers agricultural news throughout the Pacific Northwest, recently reported in this last year since the COVID outbreak, sales of organic fruits and vegetables have grown by 14%. People understand that natural, organic, GMO-free means high value and good health. This ordinance, we think, keeps that, the county's reputation up to date, and it's good for our health, our environment, and our bottom line. So thank you very much for your support for this collaborative effort. Thank you.
Next on the line is Devin Jones.
Good afternoon, Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau. In 2004, when Measure H came forward, Mendocino County Farm Bureau had made the decision to remain neutral in that conversation since we had members on both sides of the debate. When this item came forward to the Board in February of 19, looking for, you know, a potential reorganization of the original Measure H language, we maintained that position. The only thing I wanted to bring forward today is a consideration or perhaps a request that, you know, none of these things are stagnant in time. Currently, I think as the previous conversation amongst the Board was indicating, there hasn't been, to the best of our knowledge, an excessively high demand amongst the commercial agricultural commodities currently grown here to seek anything that would quantify or qualify as a genetically modified organism under this ordinance. However, you know, as we're seeing this year with, you know, additional drought conditions and, and things are unforeseen, we could potentially in the future, especially with some of the technologies that are going on with wine grapes, may need to revisit this and for consideration. You know, for example, there are several current experiments happening. One, I believe, at Rutgers University in New Jersey. They're looking at CRISPR technologies for improving upon powdery mildew resistance in wine grapes. We definitely have powdery mildew here in the county, so there are potential applications there. We're also looking at, you know, potential root stock modifications that allow for improved water utilization amongst wine grapes and other commodities. So the message I would just put forward to you today is that, you know, we appreciate the previous comments that were brought forward. We haven't really seen a high demand or a consideration per se in looking at genetically modified organisms. However, as we see additional pressures moving forward for resources, especially water, there could be a need to look at some of these technologies and where we may approve upon our, our current availability of genetic root stock and such. So just make sure to put that in the back of your mind. And if there's a time when this needs to come back to the forefront, we would like to be able to work with the county to have that conversation. Thank you.
Next is Anna Stokel.
Hi, Anna Stokel again. This pertains to my earlier comments with trailers and fire hazard mitigation. I heard it stated that this is primarily related to the cannabis industry, but this is another ordinance that will apply to all of us. And I don't even know what you're trying to achieve here with, with changing the code and what that's going to do to me as a farmer, as a food farmer. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what to say. I'm just so tired of Mendocino County crawling up our butts so far that we don't even need pathology exams anymore to make sure we don't get colon cancer. These, these ordinances need to be targeted or there needs to be some other regulation of the cannabis industry. Per the last caller, CRISPR does a lot of good. Personally, I grow non-GMO and organic crops, but I'm not resistant to what technology can do for farmers in the future and how we can better feed people, including around here. So same comment as last time. These overreaching unilateral codes that are going into Mendocino County, when they need to be targeted, could possibly hurt more than they could help. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Okay. Do we have any final questions or comments from board members? Supervisor McGordy?
So, so just to clarify something a little bit. I worked a lot in my career with Dr. Andy Walker, who's a root stock and cultivar breeder of wine grapes at UC Davis. And, and he philosophically is opposed to GMOs, but he's very actively involved in using genomics to guide his traditional breeding program, which has sped up the production of powdery mildew resistant and, and Pierce's Disease-resistant cultivars very, very fast. What normally would have taken us 40 to 50 years to breed and evaluate, he could do it about five to 10. So the whole concept of genomics and gene mapping is really, really useful. But used with traditional breeding, it can pretty much match the pace of what GMO technology has to offer. So that's part of the reason why I'm not necessarily against GMOs, but I'm not hugely supportive either because I think we have other options.
Okay. And just for context for people who've moved to Mendocino County more recently, Measure H was adopted by voters of Mendocino County and, and therefore the ordinance that's in place. And this is an update of that voter-approved ordinance. Any final comments from board members? Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate, we're not creating a new ordinance here. We're simply updating the definitions. What genetic modification entails has changed. The definition passed by voters is now stale. So it's, it's not really creating a new law. It's just clarifying what's meant in 2021. And, and I agree, CRISPR has some really viable uses. It may be one of the solutions in finding a cure for HIV or, or SARS-CoV-2. But I think one of the other callers to Ellen Drell was right that there's an economic advantage for this county, just like organic sulfur premium. GMO-free holds a premium. And I don't see any agricultural businesses demanding that they have access to GMOs for our county. And so I don't think we're really prohibiting anybody from doing what they feel they need to do. And yet, this branding may help the county.
Supervisor Hashak?
Well, I'll move the recommended action.
Would someone like to second the motion?
I'd be happy to second it.
Okay. Can you call the roll?
Chair Gertie?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
Supervisor Hashak?
Yes.
Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
And Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to item 5H, which is discussion of possible action, including approval of a retroactive agreement with Elizabeth Liz Barney in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of providing social media web design and training services for the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office for a period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, with the option to extend the agreement in the amount of $50,000 for one additional year period from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, with a total possible agreement in the amount of $100,000. And the sponsor is the Sheriff's Office.
Chair Gertie, member of the Board, members of the Board. I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of computer lag issue here. I restarted it a few minutes ago. So basically, this is coming before you. I believe it was pulled off the consent calendar because of the somewhat volatile nature of it. Elizabeth Barney competed for the contract position of social media consultant. This included social media web design and training services. She competed against two other companies. In my opinion, Liz Barney was clearly the most qualified for this position. I have the responsibility to contract with companies or persons that I believe to be the most qualified for any position in my, in my department. In my opinion, Liz Barney, as a company, as herself, was the most qualified. And I respectfully request that the Board authorize my department to take her on in this contract.
At this time, do we have any questions or comments from board members? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do.
On the line is Anna Stokel.
Hi, I'd like to introduce myself as Anna Stokel. I know none of you have ever heard of me before. This is completely unacceptable. It has come out that this person has been involved with the Parler account and has been involved with Antifa and white, right-wing extremism. And we cannot support these kind of views nor hire people to, to, in Mendocino County with these kind of views, nor allow them access to our secure websites. I'm completely shocked that you may not be aware of this because it's, I mean, it's, it's in your minutes and it's all over the place and everybody knows. And if you approve this, I don't know. I don't know what to say. If there are two other reasonably competent contractors, then pick one or go out for another request for proposal. You just, I don't know. You, you were in closed meeting. I watched the impeachment trials today on the, the, not the trial, well, the impeachment discussions today. And it's, you should have seen it. And we cannot allow people that perpetrate these kind of values to work for us in Mendocino County. Please look for somebody else. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Okay. Any board member comments? Supervisor Hashak?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I have received a lot of communication about this issue. And certainly, you know, as part of the equity, diversity, and inclusion liaison to that task force, you know, I think our county is trying to do as much as we can in those regards. And I think the message we need to send out is that we need to be, you know, promoting those values. And so I, I support the sheriff and his decision. I just would like to make sure that we're getting that message out to everyone. That this is a county for, you know, that will seek diversity, inclusion, and equity for everyone.
Supervisor McGordy?
Yeah, I understand that Ms. Barney had perhaps some miscues in terms of sharing information that, that isn't really in, you know, it's national, national politics related. And, and I just always want us to focus on, you know, our own county and not bring in something that becomes divisive, particularly to our business. And I certainly hope that as, I hope there's a, the Sheriff Kendall is watching very closely to ensure that as a spokesperson for us, that she never crosses the line. I, I don't think that he would like that either, but I'll let him speak for himself on it. And I just wondered if, I don't think you've ever had any issues before, but I just want to be sure there's a safeguard that such a thing would never be tolerated. And I think that I suspect Ms. Ms. Barney is sufficiently chastised over this, that she'll be careful.
Supervisor Mulhern?
I have a process question. So I remember the RFP going out, and I realized that the sheriff has selected his preferred contractor. After reviewing some of the things on her professional website and also some of the social media posts that she's been doing, I, I am concerned that there's not a level of professionalism that includes up-to-date standards. For instance, camo casing your hashtags to make sure that they're accessible and ADA compliant. So is there, I guess this is a question for county council, is there not an opportunity for the Board to weigh in on the options for contractors? We simply must go with Sheriff Kendall's selected contractor?
If I may speak to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So in terms of the, the process for the RFPs generally, you know, anything that is coming to the Board as a proposed contract does need to be going through the county's competitive process. I believe the policy as drafted would, would leave it on the department head and the team that they've selected to go ahead and, and to rate the proposals and to come forward with the most qualified candidate. In terms of the Board's role, when we're dealing with different elected officials, it can be a little bit confusing. I will say, as with respect to employees, the, the Board doesn't really have any role in terms of the selection process of employees chosen by a particular elected department head to the extent that they're, they're allowed essentially hire and fire the, the particular people they believe most qualified, so long as they're complying with the position allocation table budget and other requirements set forward by the Board. In terms of whether or not the Board could revisit the particular selection or indicate that they wanted a different or more qualified vendor, you know, I will let you know, I don't know of any authority that's, that's directly on point. You know, generally speaking, the purchasing agent statutes govern and really give the Board and the purchasing agent the exclusive authority to be deciding how to go ahead and contract which, which vendors to take pursuant to the policies the, the county has adopted. So I, I would say I think that the Board does have some discretion to essentially weigh in on or, or evaluate. the board does have some discretion to essentially weigh in on or evaluate whether they believe that a particular provider is best when the contract is one that would require board approval. That being said, there are a handful of other areas out there, either by specific policy or by statute, where the sheriff does have some ability to go ahead and contract within his own authority. For example, lower-level contracts wouldn't have to come to this board. So I, to make a short answer long, I suppose that I will say, the, I think that insofar as the board does have an ability to approve or disapprove this contract, you can consider whether or not you think that this is the appropriate candidate for it. If you would want to revisit who would be the best candidate, or maybe open up the process to see sort of, you know, what are the proposals that were received, you know, you could either send it back out, or you could ask the sheriff to provide, you know, the information related to the other candidates to sort of make the case as to why this was the most qualified one.
Sheriff Kendall, have you provided the board with the proposals from the other applicants?
No, but I can.
Supervisor Williams?
For $100,000, how many Facebook posts do we get? Or what does it cost per post?
I don't know that we have paid $100,000. Normally, a contract runs about $15,000 to $17,000 a year, depending on how much traffic is in there. Now, this last year with fires and COVID and everything else, of course, it was much more expensive. And she was also working with the CEO's office and the Office of Emergency Services as well as the Sheriff's Office.
So for $17,000, about how many posts or how much per post?
I'd have to look into that.
When this came to the board last time, we received a public comment that showed that Ms. Barney posted, reposted someone else's post, I guess you could say, a commentary that masking was ineffective. And I raise this with the sheriff, you know, I do have a concern that it's county policy, it's public health policy throughout the world, that the most effective way to reduce the spread of COVID is through masking, and that's been our consistent message. So it does concern me that someone the county is relying on to help communicate the county message has granted, in her personal time, sent out to the wider public a message that directly contradicts the county's message. So I'm having trouble supporting the contract.
Chair?
Supervisor Mulhern?
Sheriff, this is the second time, I think, I've heard the $15,000 to $17,000 instead of the $50,000 that was in our agenda item. Can you help me understand the difference or where I can find that? Is that a presumed hourly expense?
It's what she's been paid in the past, mostly, prior to, you know, some of the huge events that we've had. And a portion of it is, we get an hourly bill for things that are pushed out on different platforms. But a portion of it is how much work is actually done during the year. And a lot of times, our PIO team handles things while we're boots on the ground. But when we have large emergencies, you have to understand that my PIO is also the patrol captain. His second command is also our lieutenant. And so when they get pulled out to work on various things, because we all wear several hats here, then all of a sudden, we rely more deeply on her services.
Okay. Do we have any other board comments or questions? Supervisor McGordy?
So Sheriff Kendall, I'm curious how long you've had a relation with Ms. Barney and how, you know, what's the quality of her work and reliability, because that's also another important factor. We're all concerned about that and having her represent us via Facebook, because I'm sure at times she probably forwards messages, might write them. And I just wonder if there's ever been a time when you've been really concerned about what she's sent out?
I'm not sure how to answer that. Any messages that come out from me, they either come out from myself or the undersheriff. And my job is simply to pick the person who is the most qualified. And it's my opinion that she is.
And how long has your relationship been working with her?
As a social media consultant?
Yes, yes.
Well, the entire time I was the undersheriff. Now, prior to that, I was working in investigations. And prior to that, I was working in the North. I believe that she worked for Sheriff Almond prior to me for, I believe, roughly a decade.
So the county has a long history with her work. And other than this, there hasn't been any issues with what she's, with the work product that she's produced?
I can tell you that I haven't had a problem with it during my term as sheriff.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment that has come in?
No, we do not.
Okay. Any final questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Mulhern?
Yeah, with the support of the board, the General Government Committee is tasked with reviewing how contracts come forward. And I know that what I've seen from being on the outside and then new to the board, the ability of being able to research and just look at qualifications, look up websites, make sure they're accurate, has not always happened with the county. And I definitely think that there's room for improvement in that area. So I would like to see that when an RFP goes out, when possible, at a very minimum, the names of the other agencies and their costs would come back to this board when we're approving contracts. And I know that that's not specifically for this item, but I think that as a matter of procedure, that is a smart move for the Mendocino County to take on. As I said, I did quite a bit of research, and I don't know who the other, unfortunately, I don't know who the other candidates were that applied for this contract. But I do think that there's some room for improvement in updating the social media. And maybe I can just talk to the sheriff offline about some of the things that I think are important, and making sure that we are reaching all of our constituents and that they do have accessibility to the information.
Is that a motion? Well, with the board's concurrence, we can make it a board directive that when future contracts come up on the board's agenda, that we would like to see a listing of the other applicants and their, I guess, bid amounts, is it accurately describe what you like to see on future agenda items?
Minimum.
Okay. So Atlas, if you can capture that as a board directive for future agenda items?
Yes. Do we have consensus at the board?
I'm seeing some from other board members. Does a board member wish to make a motion? Supervisor McGordy?
I will move to accept this contract, but I think that there needs to be a little bit of probation here, so to speak, to be sure that we have quality control, that there's no further issues arise, you know, that would, and somehow, you know, raise any community concerns about this contractor providing their services for the sheriff. And it could be something as simple as, you know, we go for the next time period with no problems before we renew or extend the contract after that. So I think that there's enough concern here that it feels like we have to do something other than just pass it with no conditions. I don't even know if we can do that, if the county council can allow that. But that's what I'm thinking based on the concerns raised in the community. We can't discount them completely. But by the same token, I think Sheriff Kendall knows what he needs for his work. And he's been through a process and other ways this person seems to be acceptable to do the work.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, county council.
Just to try and answer Supervisor McGordy's question. So our boilerplate actually has built-in standard termination language, which gives the county a fairly broad way to terminate. It may be as efficient if the board so desires to simply ask that appropriate staff review the provisions and to explore the possibility, or essentially review performance after a certain period of time and then give direction to that effect. I'm actually pulling up the agreement right now just to make sure that it's in this particular contract. And sorry, if you give me just a moment, I should be able to, yep, our standard language is there. So if you want, you could simply provide a direction that the contract would be reviewed at a certain point and then act appropriately at that time.
Supervisor Hachak?
I'll second Supervisor McGordy's motion. And I guess for the public, you know, we have a real issue here with freedom of speech and what goes on outside of the work environment. And so I guess I would like county council to clarify what we can consider and what we can't.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, for the benefit of the board, and frankly, I think this touches on some of the public comment as well. There's a certain, in the context of government contracting, the contractors are treated much the same way as county employees. And essentially, there is a requirement that certain outside speech, outside, you know, protected activities are not used as a basis for, you know, discipline, termination, non-award of a contract, et cetera, by virtue of their content. Essentially, there's a danger that, you know, the government would be able to use its contracting power to, you know, control the speech of those who wish to do business with the government. And the courts have said that that's not appropriate under the First Amendment and that it can lead to a basis of litigation. There's a much, there is, however, a recognition that in dealing with employees, in dealing with contractors, there's sort of a narrower area where the government might have a legitimate interest in controlling the speech in a manner that has nothing to do with just sort of general censorship concerns or disapproval of the speech, but is rather specifically related to their interests as an employer or an employee. So, you know, for example, if you were to have someone, you know, working in a particular department who was, you know, espousing views that suggested dishonesty, or in particular, that they were being dishonest about their work, that they were undermining the public trust in the department by virtue of the statements that they were making and the position that they hold, there are situations that there might be sort of specific comments that there may be a legitimate interest in regulating. You know, in this case, my understanding, and I will say, I have not read all of Ms. Barney's social media posts, but my understanding, based on the public comments that have been raised, is that some people had had concerns about the nature of certain political views, for certain comments on national politics, et cetera. And I do just want to be clear for the benefit of the board that that isn't something that can or should be factoring in to the contracting decision. That is something where when we're dealing with protected speech, as a government contractor, you know, we do have a requirement to essentially be putting those sorts of issues aside. What the board can consider, and I think which is what Supervisor Jirdy touched on a bit before, is essentially, if there are comments in certain positions, if there are comments that directly contradict the message put out by the county, then the county might have a legitimate interest if that person is the county's mouthpiece, or if the position they're being hired for is to be the county's mouthpiece. They may have a legitimate interest in essentially, is it undermining the credibility of the county to be putting someone in the position of espousing these certain views, you know, whether that's the requirement of the masking ordinance that this board passed, you know, the public health message is putting out, the message is being put out by the sheriff's office, if it might somehow undermine their credibility based on directly contradictory statements that they have made. Now, you know, the courts apply a balancing test in this context. It's always very fact-specific. It's always a rather complicated analysis, and it's often subject to a lot of room for dispute and disagreement in the course of litigation. What I would say, however, is just the general principle, and the thing to use as the guiding light is really, you know, we don't consider people's political views. We don't consider their speech. We don't even consider if they've been critical of the county in terms of, you know, whether or not we choose them for their role. To the extent that we consider speech at all, it really is limited just to the context of, you know, have they said things that would prevent them from being effective at this particular job? And that's really the extent of what should be sort of appropriately part of the decision-making process and what I'm sure what the board would be considering on this front.
Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, so the public comment to me, I want to ask county council what test we apply to this, because I cherish free speech and I agree whether it's far right or far left, shouldn't be a deciding factor in our decisions about who to contract with. Quote, "The reason Fauci, Biden, et al. are pushing mask wearing is because it is a symbol of Antifa. It has zero medical value." Let me say that again, zero medical value in preventing the spread of COVID. "It connects unassuming stupid liberals to this mass movement of insurrection in solidarity with Antifa. Think about that." End quote. Is that to be considered, or is that free speech and we're to ignore it?
If I may respond to the chair, I don't, I want to be clear, this isn't a line between free speech and what may be considered. This is a question of what type of speech, even though protected, there's a relatively narrow exception and ability to consider in the context of a contracting role or employer role. And I will say, as to that particular comment, you know, I do think that this goes to Supervisor Jirdy's point, you know, I think the board can legitimately consider whether or not that's something that might impact the effectiveness of the messenger or the message.
So you're saying that's for the board to decide? I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
Supervisor Hachak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I haven't read or heard that statement before. Certainly, it's troubling. And I guess that, do we know that Ms. Barney was the author of that, or retweeted it, or echoed it, or whatever it is? Do we know that for a fact?
Well, we could ask. I see echoed by Liz Barney at the top. I'm not, I've never reshared or read anything on Parler, so I don't really know. But I think echoing is like resharing. It's picking up somebody else's post that maybe you agree with, or maybe you don't, and you add a caption and you reshare it as a statement. But so if, you know, I'm happy to, I think we have But so if, you know, I'm happy to, I think we have a motion on the floor. I'm happy to try it. And then maybe we come back with other options. I mean, one possibility I see from public comment is to set some guidelines about what's acceptable for county contractors. And I don't want to infringe on anyone's right to express their personal views that are completely separate from work. You know, this one, I can see why some of my constituents are concerned, saying the masking has zero value seems to undermine what our public health officer is saying, that masking is one of the primary tools in slowing down the spread. We've had people die in our county. COVID is a big deal. Taking precautions is potentially life-saving. So, you know, just to be frank, it seems like none of us really want to talk about it. I'm struggling with this one.
Supervisor McGordy.
Well, I am as well, and that's why I said I think that this needs to be under kind of like almost a probationary acceptance because I don't know if this has happened frequently or whether it was a one-offer or what the situation is on it. But I, you know, we do know that Ms. Barney has a long relationship with the sheriff's office and has performed satisfactorily or they wouldn't be offering the contract to her. And like you, I'm very concerned about free speech issues too. And, you know, the problem is sometimes our conversations on national politics are very heated and I certainly want to keep them out of our business because we get along pretty well. And I, especially in my district, we need to be focused on our issues and not on national politics, and this is what concerns me. So I'm just trying to get a government that runs well and kind of leave stuff that really has nothing to do with us behind. What we, you know, there's no evidence that Ms. Barney has brought this kind of conversation to social media of representing Mendocino County. So I consider this as sort of like after-hours activity. And while I might, I certainly don't agree with that commentary, I'm trying to focus on her job performance and the work that she's produced in the past, keeping in mind that what people do on their own time is kind of their own time. And while it's troubling, you know, and that's why the idea of, you know, some sort of a probationary condition, which I understand County Council, we sort of have anyway, that's why I'm putting forth the position that I am.
Sure. So I think like my fellow board members, this is a very tricky line between freedom of speech and how we want both employees and contractors to use social media. And in advance of this item, I asked for the social policy and the social media handbook. And I think that both can use updating to get in line with 2021. So if the board would like that to be taken up by the General Government Committee, I would request that as well as a directive.
Okay. Supervisor Williams.
Just for clarification, would you send just the task of updating the social media policy to the general government or would you send this whole item?
In my research, I have not found where Ms. Barney hopes anything that is nationally, politically charged in her professional duties as a subcontractor of the sheriff's office. So I don't believe that there's any just cause for postponing this item, but I think that it is very clear that our community is asking for the board to make some changes and some updates to the social media policy and the handbook because there's two.
So this is a question for Sheriff Kendall. Does the sheriff's office abide by the same social media policy as the rest of the county or do you have special policies in your branch, in your office?
Through the chair, we actually have several general orders dealing with social media that are specific to the sheriff's office.
So are those above and beyond the blanket social media policy for all employees or are they held to a different social media policy?
Through the chair, Supervisor Williams.
All I know is what the sheriff's office has. I have not reviewed the county's blanket social media policy.
I think that I'm really trying to get this off topic and County Council can get me back on track if they'd like, but also are there other departments that would have separate social media policies for their personnel besides the sheriff's office that we know of?
Chair Jurdie, Supervisor Mulhern through the chair. No, usually there is one set of county policies and particularly when it's something like the social media policy that is, you know, obviously high-profile and I would agree that every year we should revise that policy. But no, to my knowledge, none of the departments have their own social media policies, but I could understand why the sheriff would do so. Thank you.
And if I may just respond through the chair, I just add, my office has received some questions on some issues related to social media policies that are kind of unique and specific to the sheriff's office and some of the challenges that they've had in terms of information specifically about interaction of certain penal code obligations with respect to postings about past criminal activities and logs. So I do know that they've had a handful of pretty specific questions that have had to be answered.
Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, I had asked staff previously what the contract amount was last year and I heard $58,000 and I'm hearing 17 now. Is it because of a reduction in services or are we likely to hit that 58,000 again? And maybe it would be helpful, is there any pending amount due now and what's that amount so we can see how much is left?
Through the chair, was that a question for me? You addressed it to staff.
Oh, you could answer it if you know. If not, maybe Darcy knows on the accounting side. What was, is 58,000 correct for last fiscal year and what has been spent so far this fiscal year?
Mr. Chair, General Counsel Deputy CEO, Ms. Antle isn't available, but I do believe that I have the fiscal information that we got from our team. It appears that last fiscal year, the total contract paid out was 58,000. Current to date is 24,000. I'm not certain if there's an outstanding amount due, given that the contract is slated to be retro back to January 1st. The sheriff would need to answer that and I apologize.
So I guess I'm wondering, is the 17,000, is that realistic or are we likely to see 58 again? And if there's a difference, what, is there a difference in services or duties?
Is that a question for the chair?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, through the chair. Supervisor Williams, we normally would see somewhere between 15 and 17,000 on these years where we didn't have massive wildfires and have the EOC or the DOC, things like that open for an extraordinary amount of time. And so I can't tell you that we wouldn't have another one of those years, especially with our extremely minimal rainfall that we've had so far this year. I just don't have that crystal ball right now. I don't know what will happen. The reason why the contract was bumped up to $50,000 because we were forced to come back over and over and over again to bump the contracted amount up during the emergencies. And so I'm certainly unaware of any major disasters that we have coming, but I would like to be ready for them.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table. Any final comments on the motion?
Repeat the motion, please.
The motion is the recommended action. And Chair Jurdie, if I may, can we get some clarification on whether or not the task of updating the social media handbook and the social media policy to the General Government Committee was a directive?
Looking to the board, does the board agree that the General Government Committee should review an update of the social media, all county social media policies and handbooks?
Yes.
Okay, that looks like a board directive. Okay, can you call the roll?
Yes. Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern? Supervisor Hachak?
Yes.
Chair Jurdie?
No.
And Supervisor Williams?
No.
The motion carries with Chair Jurdie and Supervisor Williams dissenting.
That brings us to item five I, which is discussion of possible action, including review, adoption, amendment, consideration, ratification of our legislative platform. Do we have any updates for this meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, before we move on, I do believe we skipped item five F a bit earlier. And I do also want to let the board know that the item that was continued from this morning, we do have an updated draft of the document to reflect the changes the board wanted.
Okay, well, if County Council Office is prepared for the update of this morning's item, maybe we could just go directly into that first.
Great, and everyone should see the updated draft uploaded onto the system. This is to reflect the changes that the board requested this morning in terms of removing the provision for alternates.
So as discussed, we have updated composition of the planning commission, but without adding alternates. Any board member would like to make a motion for adoption?
No move.
We did take public comment this morning. I guess I'm looking at County Council, do we need to take public comment a second time?
No, Mr. Chair, you do not.
Okay. All right. Can we call the roll?
Supervisor Hachak?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Chair Jurdie?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you for the reminder on five F, which is the exciting item of discussion of possible action, including adoption of a resolution setting the dog licensing period for dogs licensed in Mendocino County in the introduction of the reading of the ordinance for Title X. Animal care and County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that we have Deputy County Council Ray on to answer any questions that may have, but I believe that animal care will be presenting the item.
Director Rich Molinari here.
Hello, are you ready to present?
Yes, I am, thank you. Appreciate you guys all taking the time to entertain this item. Good afternoon. We present in front of you the possible three-year dog license option. Animal Care Services processes approximately 10,000 yearly dog licenses each fiscal year and averages around a 50% dog license compliance rate for the county. The processing of these yearly dog licenses happens via mail, over the counter, and on our animal shelter website. The processing of dog licenses takes hundreds of hours for staff to complete. Animal Care Services receives thousands of questions from dog owners via phone or at the front counter regarding our dog licenses each year. In an effort to make the dog licenses process easier for the customers and Animal Care Services, Animal Care Services is requesting that Mendocino County implement a three-year dog license option. California Health and Safety Code 121690 provides the ordinance for this change. Many other municipalities and jurisdictions in California currently offer this three-year dog license option for dog owners. The dog owner, the current one-year dog license price is $25 for an altered dog and $55 for an intact dog. The dog owners in Mendocino County that can provide proof of a previous rabies vaccination for their dogs over 12 months of age will be offered the option and financial incentive to purchase a three-year dog license. The cost of the possible, the new dog licenses for the three-year spay and neuter will be $60 and would be $150 for a three-year intact license. This results in a savings of $15 for dog owners on both license options. With dog owners opting to purchase a three-year dog license, this will greatly assist Animal Care Services by reducing the amount of clerica data entries that's performed by staff, reducing the in-person visitations at the animal shelter for customers wanting to renew their dog license, which will also assist with the current COVID-19 protocols, also reduce the incoming phone calls that we receive from cross-customers that have questions about their yearly dog license billing statements, and also reduce the cost of envelopes and postage that is used for our yearly dog license billing statements. Animal Care Services will be submitting for the addition of two license fees to be included in the county fee schedule to the executive office in the coming weeks. If approved, the new three-year dog license options would be implemented on fiscal year 2122 and starting on July 1st of 2021. Prior to implementation, Animal Care Services will advertise on social media, mail out informational letters to the veterinarians, and attach informational flyers to all annual dog license renewal statements that owners receive to make, to make them aware of the three-year dog license option. We feel that this is a great thing for customer service. It'll help our dog owners out tremendously. It'll reduce our workload here and see what we can do and make it a little easier process for the dog owners.
Okay, thank you, Director Molinari, for once again finding a way to reduce redundancy in costs and pass it on to the customers. Do we have any board member comments and questions? Director Mulhern.
Forgive me, I'm not sure which document it is in, but at one point I read that staff would get the information to everybody, every business that sells pet food, and that seemed like a tall order. So good for you if you can do that, but I'm not sure how.
I have never heard that or have read that.
Oh, well, I didn't make it up, so it's in there.
No, we, you know, licensing information, the people would have to request, records requests through the county. We would just not voluntarily give that information up.
Supervisor Williams.
Two questions. That $25, is that full cost recovery or does the county lose money in this endeavor?
That is full cost recovery.
So 25 covers the costs of administering the program?
Correct.
Okay. And then on, why don't we give out the information? Why does it require a records request? Because responding to a public records request, I think it's very expensive for the county. If it's public information, it'd be better to save that expense.
Well, there is a lot of personal information in there, sir. Phone numbers, addresses, email addresses, and so forth. So all that would have to be screened. We prefer it to be screened by County Council or whoever processes our records request.
So is there any possibility of having a fully redacted version, just leave out those columns? I don't know how many public records requests we get for this, but I know in general, we spend too many dollars on responding to public records requests. And if we can make that information available, it seems like a good idea.
I've been here four years. I don't believe I've received any license information request from the public.
All the questions I have.
Supervisor Tashak. Supervisor Tashak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say I really appreciate Mr. Molinari's approach to this and creating more efficiencies for the county and making it an easier burden for the pet owner to apply for a license and get it for three years. If, I guess I'm unclear about this, if the $25 that's going on now is for fee recovery, and the fee is really to make sure that the pet is licensed, then if we go to a three-year, why would it be $150? Or?
Let me.
$60? Right? Do you understand the question? It's? Yeah, okay.
So an altered animal license is $25 currently. It's for one year. As an incentive for people to actually purchase a three-year pet license, we're requesting that they get a reduced cost for a three-year license of $60. This will actually help us because it'll be two years of less data entry that we actually have to do. And then an intact animal, the current price is $55 for that license, and then we would reduce that by $5 a year, making it a cost of $150. Again, we would only have to do data entry once every three years instead of yearly.
I guess my question is really about if it's true cost recovery, then I don't see how it would be more work to do it just one time. Why charge $60 instead of just $25?
Well, the board currently has set that a yearly pet license is $25. We need that additional, we need that revenue to provide all the programs and services that we need. So we'd still like to maintain that level of revenue that comes in.
Okay, I can understand that. Okay.
Director, Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, maybe county council could answer. I think we, two of us have had the same question. My understanding is these fees can't be a revenue source. The fees can cover the cost of operating the program. And it seems like if we're collecting the fee once and performing one transaction, that fee should cover just that transaction, and whether that's good for a year or three years. You know, if $25 a year does it, well, $25 should do it for the three-year duration. County council, can you explain what's legitimate in terms of using the fee for revenue?
If I may respond through the chair. I think generally, your statement is correct Supervisor Williams, that pursuant to amendments that have been made to the California Constitution, the fees should not be a profit driver with respect to the county. Generally, license fees are limited to that which funds the program. Prior to actually making the change to the fees, I believe that Animal Care is going to have to go ahead and submit their time studies and then have it go through the regular fee hearing process. You know, I understand there's some projections as to what the fees would likely be at that point, but one of the things that they're going to have to look at are what are the actual costs of the particular program to be offered and making sure that they're not operating as a, essentially a way to subsidize other programs or other projects that are within the department. Now, I don't want to assume too much as to what the actual cost savings might be. You know, there's going to be a relation here between the amount of time that has to go into it versus, you know, various fixed costs, et cetera, that may be going on. So if there's a reduction in the total number of hours, I'm not sure that it's going to be a linear reduction in the fee. You know, and I don't want to speak for Animal Care. I don't know if they've already done some of that math to get at the numbers that they were at.
So is it fair to say that the change we're making today is shifting to three years and that a study will be conducted to determine the appropriate price so that we meet cost recovery? And these are estimates.
I believe that's accurate.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. On the line is Anna Stokel.
Hi, it's Anna Stokel. Of course you have public comment. I'm unclear as to whether dog licensing is a state requirement or a county requirement. And I guess my two comments are, up in rural California, people have all kinds of animals as pets, like goats, chickens, cats. But licenses aren't required for any of those, and they are as equally capable of spreading disease. Or, in the case of cats, and maybe chickens or roosters, if they're not intact, creating more babies, to say it delicately. So, I'm kind of floundering on this one, but I'm wondering why dogs are singled out. And in my case, I'm on my fourth rescue doberman. So by requirement, when you rescue a dog, they have to be neutered or spayed, and he is. And he's got all of his shots, including his rabies, and I can produce them on demand, but it just seems like another red tape hoop through which I have to jump. And my, I mean, the other thing is, it was interesting to hear the discussion about what the revenues, where the revenues would go. But if it is a state requirement, I guess we have to do it. If it's not a state requirement, why do we have to do it? When there are so many other animals that aren't subject to these regulations? And now I'm going to color outside the lines while I still have a minute left. I appreciate all of you listening to my opinions today. I probably got a little bit more emotional than I intended to. But, you know, I'm under, what, this legal service from Mendocino County that I've been trying to work, you know, I've been trying to work with the county I can't get out of, and I don't even know my standing. And, you know, and there's all these other, I'm responsible. I clear my brush. I neuter my dog. I grow non-GMO plants. But all of these, you know, these constant codes that, to which we have to abide, just make things so much more difficult for a community that is not making a lot of money for the most part. The money is really coming, I mean, there's so much gentrification here, and a lot of the money is coming from outside. And I'm glad you guys have your salaries, but I haven't sold a darn thing on my farm since November because of the coronavirus. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, question for county council. California Food and Agricultural Code Division 14, 30801. Under C, the licenses shall be issued for a period not to exceed two years. Would we still be in compliance?
If you give us just a moment here, and I don't know if Deputy Ray's knows the answer to that one off the top of his head.
Deputy County Council Ray, can you repeat the code section?
Yeah, 30801. A board of supervisors may provide for the issuance of serially numbered metallic dog licenses. And then under C, the licenses shall be issued for a period not to exceed two years.
If I may respond to the chair, I'm not sure if we have the answer immediately. If the board would like, we can either come back to this one a little bit later in the meeting. I think we may need a little bit of time to give you a more on-point answer.
I appreciate that.
And then I think there's a section down below that it can be three years for dogs that, I'll let you read it, are over a certain age. And you also, it can't be valid past the period of the rabies vaccination. If this has all been looked at, I'll withdraw my question. I just want to make sure somebody is aware.
Deputy County Council Ray, I just want to make sure I do have the correct statutes that I will look at to respond to your question, but I'd appreciate if I can come back to it and look at the specific section that you're referring to.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Hachak, did you have a comment?
Well, my question is, is this really a fee or is it a licensing fee? Is it, is it a fee for the job performed? Or is it really to have the license and to have that ability to have your pet licensed? And all that entails for the county?
Director Rich Molinari here. The license serves as a couple things. It serves as an identification tool, and it indicates that the animal should have a current up-to-date rabies vaccination.
Okay, thank you.
And please note, what we're requesting to do is done in many different jurisdictions. They also have the states, they also have the charges that for one-year pet license and a three-year pet license that, you know, is on a higher tier as well. So that's all we're requesting to do.
Okay, based on the question we have, and we have one major item left on our agenda today. It is for, almost 4:40. I think we should probably take a break and come back either to this item right away if staff is ready, or we would go on to item 6A, which is the report and direction from the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee. So it's again almost 4:40. Let's come back at 4:50. Question to staff. We could either go back to five F, the dog license, if you're prepared for that at this point, or we can go on to item 6A, which is the ad hoc cannabis item. So what's the pleasure of staff?
Mr. Chair, I believe that we can answer the question that was posed before the break. There's actually two different code sections to talk about the length of the dog license. For some reason, one's in the Health and Safety Code and one's in the Food and Ag Code. They do however impose the same time requirements, and I understand that prior to, so the structure of the ordinance would have the resolutions, allow the resolutions to be the mechanism by which the length of the ordinance would be fixed, and the proposed resolutions on this one would mirror the language in the statute. It would be set specifically, well, it would be a three-year period. It would only be a three-year period for those that meet those criteria under statute to have reached a certain age, et cetera.
Okay. So you're prepared to amend the language of the resolution to conform with state laws?
Sorry, I may have misspoken. The language was already drafted to conform.
Okay, and then as to the question about fees can only recover costs, not be a revenue generator, that it should be resolved with the fee schedule or the time study that's about to be undertaken by the department?
Correct. The actual change of any fee would need to come forward as part of the fee hearing process, which I believe we do twice a year.
Okay. Okay, all right. With that information, would someone like to make a motion?
The recommended action.
Okay, Supervisor Mulhern?
Thank you, Chair. I was not on the supervisors last year, and I know that there was a challenge around some of the wording that went out with a waste management contract requesting additional fees, and I just think with items like that and items like this, it would be helpful if the board received a draft of the letter that we would be sending out, just so maybe we can see if there's going to be any questions that our constituents might have when it's a big change like this, and just a thought.
I would support that.
Okay, so I think the request is that before the letter be sent out, ask these changes that Director Molinari, if you could talk to the board and, you know, give us a week to give you any feedback, maybe or a few days, and that'd be great.
It wouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion. Can you call the roll?
Supervisor Hachak?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
Chair Jirdy?
Yes.
And Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I think that takes us to item 6A, which is discussion of possible action, including the cannabis cultivation phase one update and direction staff. This from the Ad Hoc Committee of Supervisors Williams and Hachak. Supervisor Williams, go ahead.
Yeah, I think maybe the order is Williams, Hachak, and then staff, and then get some board discussion. We've continued to work at a rapid pace on getting Phase One applicants in a position to have some options for reaching their state license. And it's troubling on many fronts, this path of allowing a third-party consultant so that when CDFA asks to show documentation that they're in progress on SEQA, they can point out they're working with a consultant and whatever work the consultant may have done. That only works if they have a county permit and and a county permit that has had the sensitive species and habitat completed. There aren't very many of those because we were skipping over about 190 were issued without doing that inspection. And so we, the board previously approved contracting with California Department of Efficient Wildlife to get two biologists to do this work. It won't be done for months. I mean, they probably won't start until March, maybe April. And there's easily five months of work there. It's foreseeable that it could trail into next year. We don't know exactly what the flow will be. The current schedule may be overly optimistic, assuming that they can process two a day each. And so until that's done, there's really no way for a cultivator to decide that they want to do the full SEQA direct to CDFA. I guess, you know, this is just one piece of the problem. We could spend all day talking about the problems. When you look at the aggregate of the problems, cultivators want to know, what are the instructions for them to do? The tangible, what do they do to get their state license? I don't see a path for most of them. You know, staff has said they think 90% will probably fail. We've gotten, out of other partners, we've gotten similar. Nobody knows for certain until we do it, but it's foreseeable that the county will lose $5 million and most or all of the outdoor legal cultivation. Phase three may be a solution, but because phase three doesn't allow a cultivator to begin cultivating until they're 100% approved all the way through the system. That's, best case, we may, it may be law in May or June this year, but then they're going to need to do full application and seasonal reports and work through the planning commission, probably missing one or two growing seasons. The idea of having some continuity to allow the Phase One applicants that weren't able to get their state license to continue, we can't find a path to pull that off. We want to say yes. I don't see what that path would be. I think other counties have tried early activation and it hasn't worked. So, you know, we could, let Supervisor Hachak have a turn here, and then go to staff. And I think the question for staff is, staff, do you see a way to get these 1,100 through to their state license in time or at all? Supervisor Hachak?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Supervisor Williams did, you know, is talking about some of the critical problems that we're facing. And here we have the staff that's been spending the last few months sending out correction letters to people, and they're not getting a full response, and we're only halfway through the 1,100. So it could be many more months of these correction letters going out. We're trying to figure out, you know, what is the pathway? And, you know, I appreciate MCA's comments about, you know, their ideas about how to streamline the system, but we just lost our program. but we just lost our program manager for the cannabis department. You know, we're, we're just, we have this attorney that we're talking to about some SEQA issues. And, you know, we're trying to figure out that pathway, but right now it's, it's not, there's not a clear viable pathway that we're seeing at this moment for, you know, to get all 1,100 through or at least have them engage in the process. You know, whether they get through or not is not the county's business, but we certainly trying all we can do. So I think staff has a better idea of what their capacity is in dealing with all of these applications, Phase 1. And then to bring on Phase 3 is, it's another whole workload. And so how do we, how do we deal with the existing ones and, you know, this oncoming onslaught? Okay, so with that, I'll pass it over to Planning and Building.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Nash Gonzalez, Interim Director, and with me here is Julia Ackert-Crog, Assistant Director. And, you know, the board has asked, you know, the question, do we see a clear pathway for the 1,100 to get a state license? And based on what we have to work with at this point in time, the answer is no. It's an uphill battle. This is, these are permits that require in-depth analysis. The time isn't there. We're looking at the CDFW reviews. And based on those reviews themselves, we're not going to be able to process the 1,100 by the end of the year. We're probably going to get lucky and maybe do 50 or 60 because we're looking at X number, and I'm going to say anywhere between two to five a week if we're lucky going through the states. The other thing is that a lot of these CDFW reviews also require analysis or surveys during blooming seasons. And that alone is going to create a backlog come this spring. And so they won't start preparing their reports until later in the year. So I see that as an impediment right there. As far as what we have, as far as complete or incomplete applications, the majority of them are incomplete applications that could not meet the test of any use permit or any other type of application. Now, a lot of these things were inaccurate drawings. And here again, I'm looking at seeing pushback from a lot of the trustee agencies like CDFW. It makes it very difficult to put together an Appendix G or what we would call in the SEQA world, an initial study. And I know Julia wants to weigh in on a few things as well.
Thank you, Nash. This is Julia Ackert-Crog, Chief Planner, excuse me, not Chief Planner, Assistant Director, excuse me. So I have looked at this extensively. I think the board is well aware that I've been involved in this for the last couple of years. And I've really tried to look at what are potential pathways so that we could see some success with the Phase 1 applicants. And at this time, I do not see a pathway to success. And I think, you know, the number of individuals that may be successful in navigating our current ordinance and the requirements is coming at a high cost to the county in terms of both our staffing resources and our financial resources. So, you know, I'm concerned if we continue on the current path, whether or not we will have, you know, more than a handful that would be successful in, before the deadline of January 1, 2022. And with that, that really, I'll turn it back over to Nash.
Thank you, Julia. And I guess one of my concerns is creating the illusion that there will be a success story at the end when there really isn't. And this is something that concerns me for the cannabis growers in that they're relying on a solution, but there isn't a solution there. And so I don't want to create a fallacy or a situation where they think they're going to get something or the illusion that they're going to pass when it's not set up to do that at this point.
Okay, Supervisor Mulhern?
Did you answer any questions?
Yeah, a couple more questions maybe staff can answer for our colleagues. The ad hoc had gone to Julia to ask, is it possible just to remove the sensitive species requirement from our ordinance and the environmental document? Understanding that it opens it to challenge, but frankly, the people who would challenge it probably want it to live on because it provides other protection that we would lose if it sinks completely. And Julia, you could answer more fully, but I think there's a concern if we remove it, that it's one of the mitigation measures and how else we might mitigate.
Thank you, yes. Julia Ackert-Crog, Assistant Director. And, you know, the main thing that we think about when you're looking at amending out of the ordinance is how that affects the SEQA document. And with the SEQA document, and I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me right here, but the sensitive species habitat review is a really important requirement of that that also helped to kind of alleviate some of the concerns from some of the resource agencies. So the concern is if the board gave staff direction to prepare that type of ordinance amendment, I'm unsure what that required SEQA document would be and whether or not we would actually have the ability to complete that change in time to still process permits for the current deadline of getting an annual license with the state by that January 1 date.
And one of my concerns, and again, this is something that council could probably weigh in, is you would open the SEQA document up again and whether that changed, the removal of the sensitive species requirement could, in essence, create a challenge for that SEQA document because you're no longer under the protection of the adopted SEQA document. And then removing that mitigation would actually create the possibility for challenges.
And then last, one other idea we had was to just rescind 10A17 completely and let cannabis fall back on the state, arguing that this county can't afford to regulate it. It's a nice idea, but we just, we failed. Too much of an undertaking for a rural county. And I think council may have some opinions about whether that itself may require environmental work. And I don't know where the board would stand on that because, you know, you would lose all of the protections that are in the ordinance. But as it is now, it's like McCowen's cannabis ordinance, it has stage 4 cancer. We know this thing is going to die. It's just a matter of when it dies, how long we can keep it supported. And, you know, if we can keep it supported long enough, maybe some of the cultivators can concurrently enroll in Phase 3 and beginning getting through that program. But without a legislative fix, it's foreseeable that a lot of cultivators will not make it through Phase 1, might run into the same problems related to environmental work on Phase 3, definitely won't have continuity to continue cultivating in the legal market. We're looking at $5 or $6 million of lost revenue per year, starting end of year potentially, and 1,100 otherwise law-abiding citizens becoming outlaws overnight. So we'd like some input from our colleagues, what to do? I think the ad hoc is happy to continue working on it, but we're not finding any viable solutions.
If I could, I'd like to ask a question that I'm sure the ad hoc has already asked staff, but I thought I might as well ask it in open session here with everybody. What is staff's opinion as to the number of people that they could get through? I heard maybe 50. Is there any sort of objective criteria that staff would use to narrow down who those 50 or 100 applicants would be based on some objective criteria?
Thank you for that question, Chair Jurdie, Julia Ackert-Crog, Assistant Director. And, you know, I think it's hard to give you a definitive number because so much of this is based upon responses that come back from the applicant as well to the sensitive species habitat review questionnaire form. And also a determination by a different agency than our department, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, whether or not the proposed activity has a less-than-significant impact. So I really don't feel that I can adequately answer that question because it really relies upon that outside agency as well. You know, I think we've talked about internally here that from what we've seen, at least we did a little bit of a test case in terms of looking at these Appendix Gs. And out of that, we only had one, maybe two, applications that we were able to successfully complete, and that was out of 20 able to complete an Appendix G. And it was still a significant amount of back and forth with the applicant. And they did already have sensitive species habitat review clearance, which is not the case for many of the other applications. So I hope that answers at least a little bit. I can't give you an exact definitive, though.
Well, that was an interesting test case and probably would qualify as an anecdote, but it sounds like 5% or 10% of your sample would have made it through. And so that's upwards of, again, as many as maybe 100 of the 1,100 might make it through. But then there's also the time limit that we're up against. Can you remind us what the time limit is with the state? Is it July 1 or is it later than that?
Two time limits. One is provisional licenses essentially expire January 1 of next year. CDFAs will also soon require that their applicants document what path they're taking to SEQA and that they show regular progress reports. And so if an extension comes, it won't be just a blanket. You have two more years to wait. The cultivator will have to continually show that they're making progress towards meeting the state's SEQA obligation. That same test may have some applicants revoked by the state sooner than end of year if they're not able to show that they're going down one of the few paths. And remember, those paths are 8102R1, which is document what's in the county file. A consultant could be used for that. Applicant may be able to do it themselves as well, but they may have less documentation that it's in progress if they're doing it on their own. 8102R2, which is full SEQA, direct to CDFAs. We've had price estimates all over the map. It depends on the property. $50,000 would not be a surprise at all from what I've heard. And these reports are seasonal, so if they don't start soon, by the time they find out that the 8102R1 approach doesn't work, there probably isn't time. And then a third approach would be Phase 3, but as we discussed, there's likely a lack of continuity, losing their Phase 1 provisional license and reapplying and waiting for a Phase 3 state annual license. So Supervisor Jurdie, I think, I'd love to hear the questions. Just so you know, Supervisor Hashack and I meet almost every day on this. We've sent staff down just about every imaginable path. We've read all of the recommendations. The Covelo Group and MCA have good recommendations. If it were as easy as doing an urgency ordinance, we would have proposed that. We've had council look into that extensively, researching the viability. We don't think that's a viable option. We don't think most of the recommendations are viable. And, you know, we could spend an hour explaining why, but I don't want to give the impression that we're not listening. We're definitely listening and trying out all of the ideas. And outside council may come through and find a pathway that we hadn't considered. So I don't want to rule it out. I also don't want to give a false sense of security that the county will find a solution for the cultivators to get their state license.
Yeah, I understood. I was just trying to ask a question that I'm sure the ad hoc had already asked. Any other questions or comments from board members right now? Supervisor McGordy?
I'm really big on thumbnail sketches. What are the major blocks, roadblocks to pulling our cannabis growers into compliance? Just if you had to list fairly simply what's stopping them from?
We can give you the big blocks. To cultivate in this county, you need two pieces of paper. You need a county permit and you need a state license. The cultivators are currently operating on provisional licenses from the state, think temporary. Those expire potentially end of year unless the state legislature acts to extend. In order to get a state annual license, not a temporary, they need to meet the state's SEQA obligation. One of the paths for doing that is showing that they've met SEQA for the local county permit. So out of our 1,100, about, I think it was 275 had county permits. It may be down to about 130 now, some are dropping off. Of those, only a small handful have had the sensitive species and habitat review conducted. And this is because the county skipped over it years ago. And now when the cultivator goes to apply for their state license, they have to check a box that that report has been completed. And what that's highlighted to us is besides the time and the cost involved, there are cultivators who are doing everything right. You can look at their garden and think, this is ideal, we want more of this. There's not plastic everywhere and they're doing it in an environmentally compatible way. But what we don't know is where their sensitive species in the 10,000 square feet that they cleared to put the cultivation in. Remember, this is not an agricultural endeavor. And so we don't know what CDFW will come back with, but what we've heard, what our staff has heard, we're going to run into problems. By the time those problems arrive, the fallback option of doing full SEQA or waiting for Phase 3 likely won't provide continuity.
So we go through timber harvests, which are sort of analogous in that you need to have a timber harvest plan and that has to be SEQA compliant. And there's consultants who do that work. Is there kind of a parallel system in terms of what they're required to do versus what a cannabis cultivator has to do? Because I know that they have a long list of requirements in their plan, road building and assuring that they're leaving the right kinds of trees and the right numbers and, you know?
Yeah, there is. Only cannabis is more regulated at a state level. And then the county has added an additional layer of the county permit, which is the disconnect from state law. You get through the county permit and it doesn't set you up for this, the state process. The 10A17 is a flawed ordinance. All the experts that look at it say, this is a bad idea. And realize this ordinance wasn't developed to encourage a legal cannabis industry in Mendocino County. It was developed to restrict cannabis. And that's essentially what it's done. It's created such a maze, most will not be able to get through it. And so the reason to argue to keep it is, there's two reasons. One is trying to provide some continuity for cultivation until we can replace it with a working ordinance. The other is you don't want cannabis cultivated legally in this county, and this ordinance puts an end to most of it. Unfortunately, it throws it out into the illegal market where we lose tax revenue, some legal oversight to make sure it's not creating a nuisance and environmental regulation.
We definitely don't want that. That's an outcome I'm sure we don't want. So, you know, we're looking at the counties around us seem to be moving their industries forward. Sonoma County has a new plan that is SEQA compliant, but it's still ministerial in nature. Humboldt County's gone a different direction as has Lake County. So their industries don't seem to be nearly as threatened as are. So what's going on there that's not going on here?
We have a bad ordinance and now we're late to the game. Those counties had a slow ramp of getting cultivators through planning commissions on use permits. We didn't do that over the last four years. So while they're sitting on hundreds approved, we're starting at zero. And the temporary state licenses, the provisionals are expiring. And so a lot of their people were able to participate in the legal market on a temporary license and ultimately transition to a state annual, a regular license. Our cultivators can't make that leap, so they're starting back at zero. Actually, I would even say negative right now because we don't have an approved Phase 3. That won't happen until mid-year. It's really bad.
Yeah, and meanwhile, we've watched two departments suffer severe distress from trying to implement this program. First, the Ag Department, now Planning. And I just, I've watched on the sidelines, it's just mystified me. You know, it's just mystified me how cultivating 10,000 square feet can be so completely complicated. You know, as somebody who's used to people growing things, and then I'm used to people growing really complicated crops, but the regulatory burden that this thing has put on everybody, including the county, is just extraordinary. I just, I'm still trying to get my head around it. It's just so completely confusing to me.
If we were to have followed Humboldt, we would be complaining. All the counties are complaining about the difficulty, but we would have hundreds of applicants approved. And we're so far behind now. And with provisional licenses going away, we're going to ask people to not cultivate until they can get through our planning commission. You can imagine the planning commission schedule today, what it'll be like when you have hundreds or maybe 1,000 applications in the queue. So the ad hoc, what we'd like to get today is, I think we would like to see if there's support for board direction to the Phase 1 program, which lacks a program manager. So not a lot of clarity on who we're directing. To ask applicants to resubmit 100% complete applications, you know, in the format that the Planning Department chooses, I would recommend a PDF with a table of contents and a check sheet, each item checked off to make sure, ensure that it's in the packet in order. in order. Make it as easy as possible for our staff to scan through it and decide whether it looks complete or reject it. And, you know, our cultivators have been asked for documentation again and again and again. And I don't doubt that there's been paperwork lost, especially in the transition from Ag to planning. The reality though, today, sending out correction letters over a long period, we're maybe halfway. We can't keep operating at that rate. We won't, we're going to run the clock until it's game over. So asking for 100% complete applications could speed things up. And I think that's one of MCA's recommendations. So that would be one direction to staff that could make a difference, not a total solution.
For clarification, are you suggesting the county prepare a fillable PDF so that we would have documents submitted in a known format?
Well, I wish we could do that, but these are complicated. They're attaching all sorts of documentation, lake and stream bed alteration agreements. You know, it's, I think instead of us trying to micromanage it, we should ask planning staff to come up with that format, be very clear of the expectation. And the goal is to streamline the processing so that planner can look at it, look at the check sheet, see that each item was checked off and then flip through. And that alone may allow staff to begin processing rather than making sense of files. If otherwise... Go ahead, Dan.
My follow-up question though is, okay, so let's say we get 95% response rate, which we may not, but let's say we did. It's over 1,000 PDFs are emailed into the county in the next three to four weeks. Are we expecting wanting the existing planning department staff to review those PDFs? Or are we looking for some sort of, I don't know, extra help that is supervised by one or two county employees? I guess I'm concerned with an inundation one more time of the planning department, of one more work project for them that we, none of us know if it's going to actually yield anything or much of anything.
Well, we know if we don't do it, that the state may revoke the provisional licenses because cultivators can't make progress on CEQA. So one reason to continue here is to keep their licenses active while we try to reach a better finish line.
So I hear that. I'm just wondering, has the ad hoc committee discussed with planning staff, how could we staff that project in a way that doesn't overwhelm the planning department staff?
Well, we've lost people from our planning department because they don't want to work on Phase 1 cannabis.
Exactly recognizing that. So what I'm saying is, I'm wondering if we could also be asking the planning department staff to come back with some recommendations about how they would staff this project. I mean, I see it as a time limited project. Hopefully it's time limited, you know? And what I'm thinking is maybe there's a way for the county to hire some extra help people that one or two or three county staff people could supervise so that we're not just shifting all the planning department staff over to what could be a very large, even if short in duration, project.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And let's hear from John to support that.
Yes, Supervisor Hescheck.
Through the chair. I think that's a good idea. And one of the things that we were looking at is this portal, you know, and everyone submit through the portal and it's all electronic, but it would take us several months to get that portal working. And we think that this pathway would be, you know, if it's structured appropriately where people are doing what they're supposed to, you know, have this template more or less and submit that, then that would be more manageable. But the response rate for a lot of the correction letters is not high at all. And so we aren't expecting a 95% return rate on these. You know, I think that they were saying that for the correction letters, it was like 30%. So that's what some of the issues we're dealing with.
Supervisor McGordy?
So for the sensitive species studies, can we use someone besides cowfishing wildlife? Is it possible that we can have private consultants do that?
No, because we made the mistake of calling out CDFW by name in our...
Oh, well, is there a possibility of us changing the ordinance or modifying it so that we can have someone else do that work? Because I mean, certainly in timber harvest plans, private consultants do that all the time.
You could change it. You'd also need to change the underlying environmental document and there'd be some time to this process and the unknown of whether the environmental document would be challenged. So it's, I'm not against going that route, but it's not a sure thing.
So I guess what I'm looking at is what are the critical gaps in the ordinance that make this thing hard to manage?
Well, that's definitely one. Probably having the cannabis Phase 1 program report direct to the board supervisors would make a difference. We're finding that having, planning staff needs to get back to planning. This is going to sink the planning department. And while we may want to borrow Julia Acker-Croggs' time to help with the transition, I think we need more direct management of the cannabis program. It needs to be treated almost as a department level because it's buried in planning. It doesn't have the resources and what we've been doing has not been working. You know, I've been watching this thing for the last four or five months, really not make substantial progress. Not that people aren't working hard. I think they're working terribly hard. But when you look at the amount of paper involved in this and making sense, it's a numbers problem that you, this extra help, if you're getting extra help, that's not really experienced planners, you're going to need an awful lot of them in a training session.
Yeah, it's mind boggling to me again, just because, I'm sorry, I may be speaking out of order here, but I just, I'm used to agriculture to see anything so heavily regulated. You know, farmers complain about the pesticide use laws and how complicated they are. That's a walk in the park compared to anything we're talking about here. And, you know, if we're being held up because we have something that is really, really difficult to comply with, it sounds like it's basically sinking the program, then we need to go back and take a good, hard look at that and see about changing it because, we don't want to make criminals out of people. I think you've already stated that and I agree with that wholeheartedly. And we also, at this point, don't want to see everything that's been done for the last four years completely go down the tubes. So, you know, I would support if the opinion of Supervisors Hescheck and Williams are that this needs to be its own department that answers to the board, I would make a motion that we create that department.
I would support you on that. I think it, I mean, we should hear from the CEO. I think it would make a difference. You know, I've also talked to staff about if I could just take these 1,100 applications out on my desk, I would work nonstop and make sense of it. And, you know, and it may be that I don't understand the details. And if I started on this, I would say, oh, this is why it's been taking so long. You know, of course supervisors probably shouldn't be that hands-on, especially with a process that's, you know, potentially up for appeal at some stage. But I think that's what we need. We need somebody focused entirely on just getting through these 1,100 applications. And with some authority to put some aside, I'll tell you, whoever submitted the sample plot plan as their plot plan, unless that actually matches what's on the ground on their property, that's not a valid application. I know that staff is dealing with a lot of applications that simply aren't valid, that don't meet the, you know, you couldn't submit to the building department. They would kick it back and say, this is invalid. And those are clogging the system. I don't know, maybe we could hear from Julia and Nash. I don't know how many of those there are, what the ratio is, but I know that's been one of the problems. And I think we've maybe lost a planner over having to deal with low quality applications. Would our interim planning director be willing to comment on the quality of applications?
So I'm going to briefly talk about that. And what I've seen is not what we call high quality applications. Again, Supervisor Williams, I think you hit the nail on the head, was what we're getting are sample plot plans that are in the mix. Instead of somebody representing what is truly out on the ground, it's somebody's best guess. And so those types of diagrams don't pass CDFW or any of the other agencies. And so poor quality is what we've received. And this is what staff has had to muddle through for months to try to make heads or tails of these things. But I also want to answer a question that Supervisor Jordy brought up is, did or has there been some sort of a study or look at extra help? And through the ad hoc, the department was directed to look at third-party consultants. And the department did put out an RFP and received requests for qualifications. And so what you're looking at is at least to be able to meet with its demand within a short period of time. And even then, they're still going to encounter the same situations that we're encountering, the poor applications, the quality of the applications. You'd be looking at three or more consulting firms to jump in and you're probably looking at a price tag of about $2 million plus. And so I guess the question the board has to decide is, is this money that is well-spent?
And Nash, if we spend that $2 million, will that be to bring the applications up to a reasonable standard that they have a chance of getting approved? Or is that just to process the 1,100 that we have? And how many would you expect to pass?
Supervisor Williams, through the chair. This is just a process. This isn't to bring the applications up to par. This is just to move the paperwork through and review them. And even then, if you received an application, they start looking through it, they're still going to have the same issues that staff would have. It's an incomplete, they got to write the letters, they've got to send it back. It's still time consuming. And I think we've got to get away from that idea that third-party consultants are actually going to help. They're still going, they're an extension of staff, so you're still going to have to train them. You're still going to have to spend a lot of time in showing them where the files are, how it works and so on. There isn't really expert cannabis processors out there. It's, and most of these firms are planning firms that submitted their qualifications and they're, you know, reputable firms. But again, like anything else, you're going to have to train these folks to come up to speed. So yes, you're going to devote staff resources and you're going to pull those resources from other things that need to be done.
So if I could just have a quick follow-up, Nash, you know, like a larger business, let's say a mortgage company or some business like that, that's very large, they might have almost like a conveyor belt of employees going through documents, making sure, you know, this person makes sure these three documents are in the right order, the next person over makes sure that the following documents are in the document file in the correct order. So people are only looking for certain things. They have a fairly simple task. That's what I kind of had in mind, if there was extra help, you know, just sort of to organize these applications as they come in and weed through them to determine, okay, like you said, you had a 30% response rate in that sample. Maybe you get 300 applications resubmitted out of the 1,100, but there's not enough time to go to get all 300 through the process due to the state's deadline, unless the state deadline gets extended. Would there be a way to go through those 300 that might come in and just sort of, these are the ones that are actually complete and therefore these are the first ones we're going to review? That's what I was wondering about. But again, I'm also very aware of the fact that anything we push the planning department to do means that that planning staff is not available for all other planning permits that are coming into the county. You know, it's, we're kind of at this unusual situation where we have a recession, the COVID recession, and yet with record low interest rates, there's an awful lot of construction going on in spite of the recession. So I know that the planning department is just in other regular business, getting regular applications for things completely unrelated to cannabis. And I don't want to underplay the importance of what we're able to deal with outside of cannabis in the planning department or, you know, the opportunity cost of not dealing with those other applications. Supervisor Hescheck?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the problems we've heard about, and we've talked about it today, is these incomplete applications. And I think that whoever is dealing with these applications needs to deal with a complete application. And if they don't receive the complete application, then it needs just be returned to them, returned to the applicant immediately. You know, none of this follow-up, checking it out, you know, all that. If it's, if they don't have the basics there, then it just needs to be returned. We need to give the staff that permission to do that. Instead of trying to coax them along and then you have all, you know, all these applications in varying states of completeness. And as far as what Supervisor McGordy was talking about, about the SSHRs, is that, you know, we did get that pilot program in place with CDFW. And with that, we were, our staff was able to pull out SSRs that we thought were good and that the troubled ones would go over to CDFW. Supervisor Williams and I worked in getting that contract with CDFW to have those biologists who could, you know, just deal with that. And they would be dedicated to Mendocino County. What we found though is that when CDFW started to look at the pile of ones that we thought were all right, they started to have more issues with those. And so all of a sudden, the pile of referred, you know, applications or SSRs got bigger. And so we're looking at, hey, this could be a huge problem for a lot of people. And like what Supervisor Williams said, if you have a sensitive species that you, an area that is, has sensitive species and you've been growing for the last 40 years in that area, you still might not pass because of that, that issue, even though there's no going back and putting in that lupin or whatever it is into that field or your site, your grow site. So those are some of the issues we're dealing with.
Supervisor McGordy?
Well, I totally support the idea of returning incomplete applications. I mean, that's something that, you know, when you do grants, when you do real estate applications, those are all required. You have to have a complete application to be considered. And if they're just sitting around shuffling them and nothing's moving forward, that should start to clean the stack. And you've got to prioritize what, and try to figure out, what's our best chances? What are the things that are stopping us? Where are the real kind of choke points and what can we do to fix them? So, you know, we have to start working on this like it's a triage where some of the patients are going to make it and some aren't. So, I mean, that's the first thing that I would recommend.
Supervisor Williams?
A lot of cultivators would like a flow chart that they could work down to get some sense of whether they should continue. And I would like that too. We've been asking for a number of months. I don't know how to put that together. I don't think our staff has an ability because this is a state license we're talking about. And we don't know what the state agencies will allow and what they won't allow until we get maybe 100 through to look back and say, here's a pattern. Do you want, is there board support for trying to remove the sensitive species review? Sensitive species and habitat altogether?
No, I don't want to do that because, I mean, that's what a lot of the environmental community objects to, is the fact that they feel like the cannabis industry is hurting the environment. And I think that's the wrong direction. What I think is, we want to do is be able to come up with a process that has some chance of actually getting done. And if we only have two people assigned to doing what are fairly complicated assessments, we need more people in the fairly complicated, which I think that there are folks in the private sector who can do that as efficient or maybe even better than cowfishing wildlife.
So as the ad hoc works through with staff on this, what can we do? What's the low hanging fruit, the big blocks to make a difference? What staff has conveyed is, yeah, you can do that. You can do all, make all of those improvements. You're going to spend a lot of public money and you're going to get cultivators to spend more money. And probably 90% of them won't get a state license and they'll be out of the legal market.
That's not a good outcome either.
But see, none of us know. It's, so I think we have to be open with the cultivators that we can make some improvements and try to keep the paths open for them to explore. But they, I mean, they could spend $10,000 tomorrow and find that it didn't make any difference. But they, I mean, they could spend $10,000 tomorrow and find that it didn't make any difference. And I don't think the county has any way to ascertain the chances of success.
So who's the final decision maker? Is this CDFA?
Well, they, it's us and it's CDFA. And for us, they need CDFW to not find, they need CDFW to find less than significant impact to sensitive species. We don't know, that work will take probably the rest of the year to work through our pool. By the time they find out it's a problem, it'll be too late to take a different path. If they find out it's a success, do they have everything else lined up to go? This is a position that Tony doesn't want to be in, right?
Yeah, I know. Go ahead. Since you've been working on this, I want to hear from both you and Supervisor Hachak about where, give us an honest assessment, please.
Well, maybe, maybe we should ask staff again. If we'd make all of the changes possible, we hired third parties to help us process, we require complete applications, maybe we get rid of sensitive species requirement. We do everything we can to make this process possible. Do you expect most of the 1,100 to succeed?
Thank you for that question, Julia Ackerskog. And no, I don't expect all 1,100 to succeed.
How many of the 1,100? And I know this is just an educated guess on your part, but it's better than our guess. What would you say if we do everything we can, how many of the 1,100 would you expect to get licensed?
Maybe 100 or less than 100. I think we're still looking at the odds not being in the favor of a successful in terms of all 1,100 getting processed and permitted successfully.
And I would agree with the assistant director's analysis of this, or at least best guess, is there's just, the time is not there and there's too much to do in such little time.
So to both Julia and Nash, again, what are the choke points? Have we already identified them?
The choke point is the ordinance. That's the majority of the choke point, as well as the sensitive habitat species review.
Okay, so Supervisors Hachak and Williams, have you looked at the ordinance and thought about what could be done to it to make it work?
Yeah, it's called Phase Three. I mean, that's really why we're pushing, well, why we've been pushing Phase Three. It looks like a viable solution and puts us in line with the other counties. You know, what wasn't envisioned, our county went first and developed an ordinance before the state was done with its process. And somehow didn't put together that site-specific review would be required for every cultivation statewide. There's no getting out of that. And, you know, CDFA is looking at our ordinance and arguing that it's not really ministerial. It's discretionary, because that allows us to reuse the site-specific work we've done. There are compromises at every stage being made. And it just appears that there aren't enough compromises possible to make this ordinance feasible.
Mr. Chair?
If I could just add my thoughts on this. I think the reason why we did not have a discretionary permit requirement was largely due to the fact that I believe the cannabis industry did not ask for one. They wanted to avoid a discretionary review permit. So I think the county was acting at the request of the cannabis industry on that point. And as you said, we acted before the state finalized their process. And so ironically, because we were doing, not in every situation, but certainly in that instance, what the cannabis industry wanted, which was not to have a discretionary review permit requirement, it actually hurt the success of the program in the long run.
And to add, it's, I know this will come up in public expression. Ministerial versus discretionary isn't the only factor here. Humboldt has discretionary use permits and a ministerial process. And the ministerial is for the small cottage farms, 2,000 square feet or less. As I understand, they have zero of those approved today. All of theirs that are approved have gone to discretionary use. It makes it look like the discretionary use model is the more appropriate. But we also have Sonoma County to the south switching to ministerial for some cases to streamline their process. That's not the only deciding factor. But what seems to be unique to Mendocino County is we have a lot of sensitive species. You can't compare us to a county, three or four counties inland and south, where they don't, you look through the binders and they don't have the sensitive species we have. That's one differentiator. And then another is, we have a pre-existing industry. And we're, this baseline the state set is all the way back to the beginning of development. So if you go to Sonoma County on a, on an ag parcel with already disturbed soil and you, and you take out a permit, even if it's ministerial to put in a project, a new project, you're not documenting 40 or 50 years of development. And, you know, the soil that was disturbed, you're, you're taking already disturbed and talking about the development that you're going to do with it. Mendocino County is unique in that we're trying to grandfather in a legacy industry that developed over decades. And planning has to write up these project descriptions that touch on all of that development to date. And so, you know, when we went to our state reps, they asked, well, do you think cultivation site on a steep hillside in Covelo above watershed would be approved today if we had site-specific review? I don't know. It's commercial development, it's not agriculture. And that's, that's really the test that's being applied, only it's, it's a drying shed that was built 20 years ago, a site that was cleared 30 years ago, plot plans that don't match.
Yeah, well, the industry's really shifted. Obviously, it was, the industry that evolved was designed to be hidden in places where people didn't go. And, you know, now we're dealing with an industry that can be in the open. And the counties, as you said, that are just starting to have a competitive advantage, because they can go to places that are wide-open agricultural spaces where basically all of the native species have pretty well been removed a long time ago. And it's just, it's a different world. And I, it just feels like we're at a real competitive disadvantage here. And I, it also feels like we've spent four years spinning our wheels, unfortunately, and that we don't have a lot to show for it. And yet we have this industry that's out there that has been, been probably driving certainly the economy of the rural parts of our county for decades. And it just seems like, you know, giving up on them is not really the right thing either. So I'm just baffled by the situation. I just, it's, it's not like any other crop I've ever dealt with in terms of the physical setting of where it is and how it's regulated and marketed. It's just really, really different.
I think I'd like us to go to public comment. Is the board okay with going public comment at this point?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure we have public comment. Can we have that now?
Yes, one moment.
On the line is Michael Katz.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Board, thank you so much for taking my comment. It's very disappointing to hear, my name is Michael Katz, I'm the executive director for the Mendocino Cannabis Alliance. It's very disappointing to hear the tone of this conversation and that there are no solutions for moving forward with the current situation when MCA has been providing concrete suggestions, as we will continue to do, that serve to continue moving the process forward. To hear in an offhand way that the expertly considered recommendations being brought to the board are not viable without providing detailed responses as to why does not enable all of us to work together to keep the process moving. Providing continuity for existing operators should be the number one priority of this board in relationship to cannabis policy. And I'd like to remind everyone that when we're speaking about how many licensees may or may not get through one path or another, those numbers that we're speaking about are people with families who are members of this community who are struggling. If there are 100 people who may be able to get through a path, then the county should do everything it can to make sure those 100 people who have been operating in good faith based on commitments made to them get through that path. It's important to remember that no one will benefit from the existing operators falling out of the licensed market. The county doesn't want it, the state doesn't want it, the regulators don't want it, the licensees don't want it. Speaking to others throughout the state, the idea that there won't be some sort of extension on provisionals is unthinkable. The problems that we are facing are not insurmountable. This is not the time to throw up our hands and give in to the complications of the situation. We can get through this and we can do it together, but we have to get creative. Applicants and staff have been challenged by many facets of both the state and local programs, especially with recent staffing issues. It's crucial that the county remains committed to those who've already entered the county program and those whose path forward are still uncertain. Capacity is key to any decisions being made here today. And logic dictates that we must reduce the workload of remaining staff to ensure that these recent resignations don't do irreparable damage to the businesses that are already operating. It's also essential to focus resources on the final review of a complete application prior to accepting any new applications. How could it even be considered to accept new ones, given the state of the current staffing and the program? We have made a number of recommendations regarding staffing, increasing efficiencies, reducing bottlenecks that we ask you to consider. The memos that we provide are incredibly well-thought-out, very detailed, very researched. And we're providing real solutions that we would like you to consider. And if there are questions, engage us in implementing them to the benefit of the entire community. I really appreciate your consideration of these things and hope that you take them for what they are, which is an attempt by a group of committee.
So I actually have a couple of questions for the speaker, if that's all right, Chair?
Go ahead.
So we are taking this suggestion seriously. And we spend considerable time with staff, both planning staff and council, trying to determine if there's feasibility. Are there any in particular that we should answer? Because I know you're representing a whole, a whole collection of people.
I'm sorry, while I was being unmuted, that question was, I couldn't hear it. Can you please repeat it?
Yeah, are there, are there any ideas in particular that you would like an answer to today as to why they're not feasible?
Well, I mean, you know, and we're definitely interested in looking into, say, the urgency ordinance, if that winds up being a possible option. We're not saying it necessarily is required, but we're seeing it being implemented elsewhere. And we understand that it is SEQA, it's not beholden to SEQA, and it is based on an imminent threat to the current operators going out of business. So if it were utilized as a transitionary element to go from Phase One to the new program to enable continuance of operations, we see that as a completely viable solution if necessary.
Yeah, so maybe we could get an answer from county council, because we did try to follow up on that. And after research, it was determined that it's likely not viable. County council, can you answer that question? Can we use an urgency ordinance to allow continued cultivation, to provide continuity between Phase One and Phase Three?
If I may respond to the chair. So there are certain advantages that may come with an urgency ordinance specifically that you would skip the first and second reading process and that you would skip the 30 days before implementation. However, you know, when we were discussing this, there had been a question essentially as to would the urgency ordinance allow circumventing the planning commission process? In our review, the answer on that is no. The, there's a specific urgency ordinance that talks about, or there's a specific, specific section of the code that talks about urgency ordinances in the context of the planning commission. And it really only allows for moratorium. It doesn't allow you to go ahead and do an affirmative authorization of new land use or, or changes in that way. It essentially allows a moratorium and sort of maintain the status quo until such time as the planning commission has an adequate opportunity to review, study, and then make recommendations upon the proposed changes. If I heard correctly, I think that this particular speaker wasn't, wasn't actually talking to either of those, but was suggesting that it might be possible to circumvent SEQA by doing an urgency ordinance. I don't know that I could speak to that at the moment. I'd have to do a little bit of review. I'm not, I'm not quite certain where that was coming from. But I would, I would have concerns with the prospect that something that frankly looks like a substantive, long-term change, authorizing additional, additional cultivation or additional activities.
It's not additional?
Might not be.
I'm sorry, it's not additional. Oh, I'm sorry, can you still hear me or am I on mute?
We can hear you for the rest of the answer.
So to the extent that would be authorizing things not, are already authorized by law, you know, there may be issues with respect to whether or not the board would truly be able to circumvent environmental review by enacting an urgency ordinance.
If I may respond, you know, our understanding is that the urgency ordinance is SEQA exempt because it's addressing a specific imminent threat to the community. The status quo that we're talking about are the existing operators who are, who are already operating under a failed ordinance. The need to enact an urgency ordinance to enable those existing operators to transition to a platform that enables them to get to their annual license would be the reason that the urgency ordinance was implemented. And in this process, it is SEQA exempt. That is the, that is just, and by the way, this is just one consideration. It's not the only one. But there are several that we have presented in multiple memos and continue to present that we would really be interested in digging in with you guys to figure out what are the real possible solutions? Like, we want to be here as a resource for you and work together.
Mr. Katz, I appreciate your elaboration there. And I assume that the ad hoc committee is continuing to, with you and, and any attorneys that you have who understand SEQA and can provide, you know, their own analysis of the SEQA issue. But we do kind of need to kind of confine the back and forth a little bit. Supervisor Williams?
Can we send, we don't have board approval for using the outside counsel to look at this particular problem. Could we get a direction from the board to have our outside counsel related to SEQA look at the possibility of using an urgency ordinance to secure state licenses?
Survey the board on that. Supervisor Moore-Hern?
Yes.
Okay, McGordy, yes? And I see with Supervisor Hachak that this is a recommendation of your ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, looks like we have.
Hold on just a sec, I, I'm sorry, I was muted. I just wanted to say or ask, what do you think this is going to cost? Is this a small project or a huge one?
Candidly, this, this might be a five-minute phone call. It depends upon whether or not he has the answer off the top of his head. I'm not aware of a SEQA exemption that would apply to urgency ordinances generally. There are certain requirements or exemptions in SEQA for certain types of emergency actions. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect frankly more than $1,000 on this. I would expect it to be below that.
Well, yeah, certainly worth that, I support it.
Okay, so staff, you have, they have direction on that point? Okay, do we have other public comment?
Next on the line is Ron Edwards.
Good afternoon, board. I'm a little confused on all of this. I mean, I know originally nurseries required an administrative permit. I went through that process, got to it, the board said it wasn't needed. I got a $40 refund on that, wondering if those files are still available by the county. I did email with that information back. Secondly, you lost and had the wrong address, so I had to refile in '19 with a new application. I put everything in a binder with tabs for each section that was required and turned that in. And then I got all my dividers back and saying we didn't need this. So I'm wondering if there was a process of, I know it's hard in COVID, but we could put a six-foot table where applicants would go down the line. And each section would have somebody there to check it off, where you slide the paperwork over, they say approve, good, you're good to go, you go to the next station, very similar to when I was catering. We did a large plate up, you have each station doing a small section of the work. And then also I'm concerned, kind of the McGowan rule of where he said that government is very good at regulating people who come in the door. And I know that when you lost my application, I had to redo it. You sent me a letter that says you were sending this information to CDFW and Fish and Wildlife and the sheriff and all. Are you going to be doing that? In other words, making all these people who have been paying taxes, working on the process, a target of easy numbers for law enforcement to go after and CDFW? Because these are all people who you know are not armed. You know, they're people who are just trying to do it correctly. I'm really concerned about that. And I'm curious as to where is the buy-in from the environmental community? They were really, they're fighting this. Are they there? Are they saying that they would rather see all of this disappear and just go back to the way it was? Or are they actually participating in trying to help resolve this information or this situation? And that is it. So I just would like to know, and SB 59, I haven't heard anything about that. I know it's a hail mary, but I know the state just can't lose, like Mendocino can't lose this taxable base. Is the state really going to lose that? And then how would that play into this? And then how would that play into this? Thank you.
Next on the line is Monique Ramirez.
Hello, this is Monique Ramirez, speaking on behalf of the Covelo Cannabis Advocacy Group. Man, this is such a sad meeting. One question that comes to mind in this discussion that you guys are having right now is about if the county chose to rescind the ordinance, what that would do to provisional license status currently for everyone? And would that mean that the Appendix G streamline pass? Would that be not, wouldn't that, would that not be a viable option anymore since the county kind of has to be a partner in that pathway? And even if we see everybody resubmit their file and it goes to a database, like, what is really going to happen, I guess, is the big question with all of this doom and gloom? So those are the questions I have to respond to. And then furthermore, I also, we also strongly believe that an urgency ordinance needs to be explored as a pathway, just to keep people to be able to operate while some of this gets figured out. And then we want to circle back around the issue around the 188 applicants or permits that have been issued incorrectly, and we really need these applications to be acknowledged and the people notified within 30 days that this has been done incorrectly, because that's a key component for them to understand if Appendix G is even an option for them, especially as they start to unravel what they need to do to satisfy SEQA and consultants and things like that. And, you know, it's going to be really important that if we're going to entertain a Phase 3 opening, that we have to prioritize our Phase 1 applications. And, you know, it seems like we really want to make sure that there is equal protection against, around everybody, but I would say that what needs to be protected is the people that have been holding up this county for the last several years, trusting our government, putting everything on the line to comply, to like, say, sorry, you might just have to go to the side now because someone else can apply that, you know, in Phase 3 and meets these other requirements. Like, that's crazy. That's crazy. So we absolutely owe it to our cultivators to be able to be processed. And we also, you know, we're the legacy here, and we matter. And not to say that anyone else outside of that doesn't, but we are, it's almost like being, you know, in the line for a concert, and we've been sitting here for years waiting to get in. We also really want to know about the checklist thing that the county was working on with the, or with the staff, to create kind of an idea of, these are things that will prevent you from using Appendix G, and that you're going to have to go full-blown SEQA and go that school initiative.
Next on the line is Blair O'Clair.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Blair O'Clair. I own a diversified regenerative farm in Covelo called Radical Herbs with my husband. I was the one who sent in the memo, if you saw, with the pictures, just trying to put a face to who I am and what we do out here. I would first like to say, I do appreciate, I feel like there has been doom and gloom, but I also see some good creative thinking happening, and I'm really thankful for that. And I would really hope that through this Phase 1 discussion, that we can look through the lens of that there will be legislative extension happening. And so how can we fix Phase 1 in that, with that, looking through that lens? It's not going to be easy, and it's going to be a lot of work, and not everyone will probably make it, but there's a lot of us who want to get through Phase 1 and get through this program and have turned everything in and have done proper maps and are just doing everything we possibly can to try to get through this. If, you know, if we lose Phase 1 cultivators, we're losing more than just tax money, we're losing people in the community, we're losing, you know, more money that's going into the community, and I just really want to make sure that. I'm also on the Policy Committee of MCA, and we've just been working really hard to try to figure out the creative solutions, and I think that they have really laid out, we have really tried to think of what would be the, with the loss of staff, what would be the best priorities to try to get through this. And I think that trying to have everybody's documentation put onto a database like Acela, which we're all familiar with, through the CDFA License Program would be a really good step. Then it's all there, that it can be reviewed by our, if we have consultants, and it would just be a way to have everything organized in a digital format. Everything really should be digitized. And I think that it will take several months, and it will cost a little bit, but in the long run, it'll cost less by not having to have to rely on staff to have everything there. I also think that we should look at ways of having the SSHR potentially discretionary as opposed to ministerial. Have we looked at that? Is that possible? Is there, that potentially we can amend the ordinance?
Next on the line is Corinne Powell.
Good evening. Thank you for having this audience and this discussion. I too am disappointed at the basic giving up sentiment that I'm hearing. I do agree with MCA's recommendations in almost all ways, and I believe that it's very important for the county to establish a cannabis department. Many of the stakeholders in the community have asked for that since the beginning of this regulatory process, and I think it would help to create knowledgeable people who could better, I believe, provide information to the board. I am wondering, since I was just recently re-permitted in the county, if I take upon myself to want to use the questionnaire of Appendix G process prior to actually having all licenses come due again and potentially a use permit of some kind or whatever, if the county staff is going to be processing them? I'd also like to know if there's any new amended version of the questionnaire that's been worked out with CDFA for our uses. I'm confused about why we're concerned about the mitigating negative deck being ruffled by what we're doing with our cannabis regulations and requiring site-specific SEQA. If we're required to do site-specific SEQA, how is the mitigating negative deck even relevant anymore? I was curious to hear Representative, excuse me, Supervisor Williams mention 8102 R1 and 2, are those potential documents that we should be looking at if we're trying to do an Appendix G? Could staff please give us some idea as to, those of us who are permitted, how we might move forward with the Appendix G? Thank you very much.
We're going to try Hannah Nelson again.
Hi, this is Hannah Nelson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for an incredibly engaged discussion. One thing that I do want to say right off the bat is Public Resources Code 21080 subsection B4 states that ordinance, a specific action necessary to prevent or mitigate an emergency is exempt from SEQA. So I think that the issue is, is there an emergency to be mitigated or prevented? And I would posture that the demise of so many independent businesses that have been paying their taxes, trying to do the right thing, and through the quagmire of the overlay of problems that have existed and the transitions and the unclarity and the lack of staff and outside agencies, they'll go away. They won't, if there is a discontinuance of operations, either because they can't make it through as it's colloquially stated, Phase 1, and they have to discontinue before they're approved for Phase 3, that's a pretty darn big emergency. So I would encourage the examination of not just the narrow scope of how the question was framed with respect to outside counsel. I would explore all avenues and all possibilities, and particularly in looking at other jurisdictions. As MCA has pointed out, Trinity County just did the very same thing as they work out the details of their discretionary use permit program. One of the other things that I'd really like the board to consider is, at the very least, while the contract with CDFW is underway, asking CDFW to, in addition to reviewing the sensitive species and habitat questionnaires and sites for sensitive species and habitat, to specifically make suggestions regarding mitigating measures that might bring the standard back down to a less-than-significant impact. Also, I'd really ask the outside counsel whether or not this standard being used by CDFW in their review is actually the proper standard. I'm not sure that in order to prove a less-than-significant impact...
This is Deputy Clerk of the Board Atlas Pearson. We do have one more caller on the line. They're unidentified, so we're going to pull them in and see if it's our last person who registered. You can unmute yourself by pressing star 6, and please identify yourself. Okay, so that concludes public comment for this item.
We did have a number of specific questions and suggestions, because I'm kind of looking to the ad hoc committee. If there, I know that you may have heard much of that already in your numerous ad hoc committee meetings, but was, are there some points in particular that you want to bring back to the board and to staff for clarification or comment?
Yeah, does the board want to have the Cannabis Division report directly to the board supervisors for a period, given this is a bit of an emergency? There's one, two, three?
Yes.
So that should be direction to staff. Maybe we can leave it to staff to figure out how to arrange that. I don't know that it needs to be a department head, but it'd be good if that person. And can we get authorization to have the ad hoc work with whoever it is leading that division on a day-to-day basis? And if there's any policy decisions, of course, those come back to the full board. But, you know, where we've stumbled before is, you know, sending out $7,000 of certified letters versus can we just use an email? Some of those operational decisions, I think we can rely on the executive office to just make a decision rather than wait two weeks for a meeting, if everyone's okay with that. The SSHR removal, do we want to go there? It means opening our environmental document, subject to change, significant staff time. It could help cultivators get through our ordinance. We don't know what a equivalent mitigation may be. Maybe it would be a biologist, but not from CDFW.
So, kind of thinking about this a little bit, there must be places that you could sort of discount automatically as not having to go through that review, because they're already in a highly disturbed environment, or?
Not a lot of those. One that looked ideal for us, I think, was a horse pasture where the horses had significantly disturbed the soil over a long period of time. But staff had, was already given some discretion to put some aside that didn't need CDFW's eyes. CDFW, I understand, asked to see those and said, no, actually, those do need to go through their biologists, and those may have problems. So, you know, after they shared the reference to the Sensitive Species Guide, I took a look. There are sensitive species all over Covelo. I mean, their district is covered in sensitive species, which is where a lot of these applicants are. You know, when you asked earlier, what about other counties? A lot of other counties don't have the sensitive species problem. You go to Santa Barbara, and they're using already disturbed ag land without sensitive species, and they have a better ordinance. The urgency ordinance, we will, if with board permission, will work with County Council on getting the outside counsel to give an opinion. My understanding is that's already been researched, and it applies to stopping an activity, say, a moratorium on hemp, but may not necessarily be applicable to allowing an activity. And even if it allows it, it won't extend the state license sunset. And so even if we use it for our purposes for a permit, is it enough to get the state to issue an annual license? Probably not, but we can take that up, research it more, and report back.
On the sensitive species issue, I mean, in some ways, it doesn't surprise me. I mean, knowing in the coastal zone, so much of the land in the coastal zone has, you know, any number of plant life that the state has identified as sensitive, rare, whatever. And in the coastal zone, the county is dependent upon the analysis of fish and wildlife, because we don't have our own botanist, biologist on staff to make their own determination. And so I feel like we had an experience that hasn't always worked out for all involved in the coastal zone, and perhaps not taking that lesson, found ourselves in the same situation in this ordinance. Supervisor Hachek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that we can, the ad hoc can take some of these issues brought up, and certainly we need to meet with MCA and discuss, you know, what we're seeing in a lot of these issues. But, you know, like, going back to CDFW and see if they can make suggestions to bring it into a less-than-significant impact. You know, I think some of those things might have some potential. You know, that's my feeling, being optimistic about it. I think that getting rid of the SSHR is probably not the way we want to go. You know, we have to open up the environmental document. It would create many unintended consequences for that. Maybe there's a different way of doing it, but Supervisor Williams and I are having a town hall tomorrow at 4 o'clock for the, as part of the cannabis ad hoc. I just wanted to let that be known to people. The provisional deadline, we're still working on that, and we see that as a needed change, but people are going to have to show that they're in progress still. And so that's kind of another glitch, even though, you know, the provisional deadline might be extended. And then staffing and efficiencies, you know, Supervisor Williams and I are working on this directly with staff, maybe we can figure out, you know, the way to move forward. So.
Well, so I would agree with you. I think there's a lot of peril in reopening the environmental document. And, you know, it then would open us up to litigation, which means that no deadline will be met. So I just think it's very risky and unlikely to succeed. So I'd like us to focus on the things that have the least amount of risk.
And also the most potential success. I mean, that's probably equally as important.
So if we're not, and I'm with you there, so cross that option off. We're leaving the ordinance and the environmental document as is. We have two paths. With Phase 3 isn't an option for now. And even when it is, cultivators will have to make it all the way through and get a permit before they're eligible to work on the licensing. So effectively, there's two options. Document once in the county file, that we used an issuance of the county permit, which won't work because the sensitive species won't be done until maybe end of year. The other option is to have the cultivator work direct with CDFA and do full CEQA, submit it direct to the state, bypass us. We could communicate that now. It's an expensive route. CDFA doesn't have staff, although the state can staff up. This is in regulation. This is their responsibility. So I don't think that should hold us back. Do we want to advertise this is the most viable path?
Well, so I have a question for the ad hoc committee because you've thought about this. If we take that route, I'm curious if you think there's some chance that the state, now receiving these direct applications, they may feel some pressure to provide an extension?
Yeah, what we don't know is, will, if they, if they submit direct to CDFA, what does it mean for their provisional? Are they going to lose the provisional while the state is evaluating? There are some unknowns. This is not a sure thing, but it would remove the county as a bottleneck. The applicant, they're an applicant of the state, not us. They would do all their application and environmental work direct with the State of California, leaving us out of it.
Yeah, so the question I'm just asking, and maybe it's rhetorical, but if the state had all these direct applications, it's now in their queue, and would that put some pressure on the state to give themselves an extension for the permit program?
Well, I think they're all through the chair. I think they're already feeling that pressure because they have something like 5,000 provisional licenses they have to deal with at CDFA. You know, what we don't want to do is just give up on our, the people in the existing program at this point. And if we, you know, do, CDFA will probably kick those people out of the provisional licensure.
One of the difficulties is, I don't want to give up on it either. We should keep trying. But over the weekend, I heard cultivators are paying consultants large sums of money and trying into contracts to have this work done. And the little bits I've heard, I don't think it'll be a success. Either the scope of work doesn't strike me as matching the state requirement, or I know they need the sensitive species and habitat with a permit from us before they can do it. That's an unknown. So I think the communication is really important because I don't want to see cultivators that have four years struggled through this spend another $10,000 to not get a state license. So, you know, I think the message needs to be, we're doing everything we can. We're exploring all options. But, you know, continue at your own risk. The county doesn't have much ability to predict whether a cultivator will ultimately be successful in obtaining a state license.
Supervisor McCordy?
So it seems like we ought to also queue the ones who are really in trouble and say, hey, you know, the way things are going, looking at your, at the quality of your application so far and everything else, you probably are not going to get a license. And at least give people a heads up who are like seriously in trouble. And by the same token, people who are, have really put a pretty good faith effort in and are fairly close, but, you know, deficient part of their CEQA compliance, you know, encourage them to stick with it. I don't know. I just, it seems like we have to kind of get real about who's in the queue and how this is going to work.
And can we go back one last time to staff to ask, based on what they've heard here, what we can expect?
Julia Nash, could you step in?
Sure, sure. Thank you. So I'll lead off here. This is Julia. And, you know, so what I've heard so far in terms of the direction was first referring the urgency ordinance to satisfy CEQA to outside counsel, and then, or the issue of the CEQA exemption for the urgency ordinance to outside counsel, and then the cannabis program reporting directly to the board. And I will say, you know, I only have some concerns about the timing of this with regards to where we are at right now and making a big transition like that. But it would be just important that it's done, you know, smartly and really planning out how that transition would happen. You know, another portion that I think I just want to touch on briefly is, you know, I think I heard one of the supervisors mention that, you know, would, you know, if we were to not proceed forward with the current ordinance that we have, it would be abandoning the Phase 1 applicants. And, you know, I think my position has typically been that I feel like we have sort of a redundant permitting system between us and the state. And I think there's parallel examples we can look at with things such as surface mining and things like that. So, you know, I want to be clear that, you know, changes to an ordinance at our local level don't necessarily mean that the legacy cultivators are hung out to dry because really, right now, they're jumping through two hoops. And, you know, the state is one. And, you know, I think one of our big challenges is that we are right now being asked to do a lot of the workload for the state. And that's where a lot of this concern stems from, from our office and from myself and Nash on this, is the resources required to do that work. So I'm sorry if I'm a little off topic on that, but I want to turn it over to Nash for any other comments.
No, and I agree. And I think this is something that I've discussed already with the ad hoc. And I'll use the example that Julie just made on the surface mining permit. These are permits that are done at the local level because the legislature has given the authority to the locals to do said. And it says that you have to issue a use permit and approve a reclamation plan. But when we talk about in-stream mining or any permit that has the potential to affect sensitive habitat species, you still have to go through the fish and game process. And what happens at that point is, once the county issues the permit and the CUP is issued, then what happens is the applicant has to take a copy of the CEQA document that was used by the county to fish and wildlife and go through their permitting process. And if they find it adequate, they go through that process and get their 1,600. That holds true for any other state agency, such as Department of Water Resources, or any other state agency that needs or requires a state-level permit. And so this is where, again, you know, we go back to the ordinance. If the ordinance had factored that discretionary review process, we wouldn't be here today. And again, I assure the board that we've turned this thing upside down and there is no clear pathway.
I think I hear CEO Angelo in the background wanting to speak.
Through the chair, Chair Jordy. Thank you. Supervisor Williams, I had some questions just for clarification operationally, and I think Julia started the clarification. But it is my understanding now, based on this meeting, that the board would like to have a cannabis unit that reports directly to the Board of Supervisors. So that would be through the cannabis manager. So I'm not certain what the timeframe is within the Planning Department as far as hiring another cannabis manager. But I would expect if the board wants the unit to report to them, then the board would be involved in the hiring of the new cannabis manager. So along with that, I know that there are planners that are in the cannabis unit. So I think there may need to be a discussion on what is actually happening with the staff in there before the direction, before this board assumes the supervision of the cannabis manager. And I would also say that what I wasn't clear on, and it's okay, you don't have to give me an answer today, but I wasn't sure if this was a permanent move, or if you were looking at a temporary move to get through this phase before you would move on. So you don't have to answer that today, but it is a question that will need to be answered at some point. Additionally, that while the cannabis manager, therefore the cannabis unit, will report to the board, I'm going to make the assumption that they will stay in the Planning Department, just logistics-wise, as far as offices, location. There may come a time when we would move them, but I would assume right now, we could go ahead and leave them. And then since this is going to be a new model and the manager will be reporting to the board, I'm thinking that this board may want an update at every board meeting, since we have a significant time crunch that we're dealing with. And so, you know, if I've said anything that's incorrect, please, please correct me now. Additionally, the budget for the cannabis unit may need to be reviewed, and that's something that the planning staff can do. And we can look at any adjustments to that budget being brought to this board at mid-year, which will be only in a few weeks. So unless Nash and Julia have any other plans, I would say that the hiring of the cannabis manager could be within the Human Resources Department under William Schertz, and that William could work with this board on hiring the cannabis manager. I think that a couple of things that need to be very clear, and I realize I'm very operational here, but this is a big change. And we want to support this and make this change as successful as we can. So I am curious, sometimes it's very difficult to have a staff person report to the Board of Supervisors because there are five of you. So I think it needs to be very clear that the cannabis manager, this is what I need clarification on, is the cannabis manager reporting to the elected body, which I think is what you want, and then are you looking at the cannabis manager working with the ad hoc as the representative of the elected body, and then the ad hoc and the cannabis manager bringing information to the board for decisions? My, I'm also thinking that-
On that point, I'd like to look to the board, but I think we would look at both. So I think the, I think the, you know, final interview for the final applicants would be, you know, close session with the full board, but that the board would be delegating, you know, dated, frequent check-ins with the ad hoc committee, but the full board would want to get regular updates and direction from the full board to the department.
Okay, very good. I think that additionally then, not to sound very harsh here, but the Planning and Building Services then would have no authority over cannabis, and neither would the executive office, to be clear. Cannabis then is under the direction of the board. That's what we're setting up. So, yes.
One correction there. Really what we want is to have this cannabis manager focused on Phase 1. I think Phase 3 use permits really are a Planning Department task. I mean, it's a standard use permit, just happens to be for cannabis. Maybe we could ask Julia Ackers Krog for her recommendation, but my intent here was to have this cannabis manager focused entirely on cannabis cultivation of Phase 1.
Okay. Before Julia makes any comments on that, my only concern is that this cannabis manager understands that they report to the full elected body. Obviously, they'll be working with the ad hoc per direction of this board. But I can tell you that there, within this cannabis program, whether it was in the ag department or whether in the Planning Department, that there have always been issues about, you know, just one supervisor giving direction and giving direction to the cannabis program. So I think that with this board, to be clear, that it benefits this board for the full board to give direction rather than, either the full board and the ad hoc, rather than just one supervisor going out and giving direction. I believe it confuses the staff, and I think it also works against the full board direction. So with that, I would ask Julia if there's anything that she would like to add or question based on the explanation, I think, that we just went through. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Angelo. This is Julia Ackers Krog. And so my only real comment is, one, I want to let everyone know that we did submit our requisition request to Human Resources to fill the cannabis program manager position. So that has been started. The, I apologize, I'm a little bit lost for words because I'm, just a lot of information to take in right now. But, you know, my, again, my main concern is about transition here and the staff that are working within that cannabis unit. So I'm, you know, I really do think there needs to be a level of support provided to them. These folks have been moved around to different departments a number of times, and that's very difficult in terms of an employee morale perspective. So I am a little bit concerned on that front with the direction that this appears to be going today. So I would just really encourage that there's, you know, a lot of support provided to them, and whether that's with the assistance of planning and building, or from the executive office or from the board directly. But, you know, this is a kind of a shocking turn in the meeting here today. And with that, I don't have any additional particular comments, but I'm available for questions, of course.
Julia, if we were to leave it the way it is and just hire somebody and follow the existing model, do you feel like you could supervise that person to get all the applicants through Phase 1?
Honestly, you know, with having not just the cannabis manager resigned, also losing one of our key senior planners in our office as well, I don't feel like I have personally that capacity to be able to manage that person as well as my regular duties that are assigned. So, you know, that is a concern.
So if we, I know this is a bit radical and unconventional. We could hear again from the CEO, if we don't do this, my concern is hiring someone off the street to be a cannabis manager, it'll take them several months. I mean, it's taken John and I about half a year getting in depth. And so I'm afraid we can't have a multi-month ramp-up where somebody new learns the problems.
Chair Jordy, if I could just comment on that, I think this is a very honest conversation, which I really appreciate. I appreciate the Assistant Planning Director putting it out there that they just don't have the bandwidth to do this. I think that the point, if I understand your point Supervisor Williams, really, the ad hoc now has been doing, has been very involved in the last couple of years and particularly over the last few months, and that you could lend that support to the cannabis manager that possibly they couldn't get because no one else has the bandwidth. So I think this is doable, and I think once, I understand Ms. Ackers' concern because there are planners involved, and the last thing we want is that these planners leave the cannabis program right now because this is a radical change and they're very concerned. I think, you know, when we started the cannabis program years ago, we hired six new staff in the ag department. And that staff was supposed to be dedicated to cannabis. People wanted to work, they're professionals. They wanted to work in ag. And so it was difficult for some to go, to start in the ag department and then work in cannabis. And so I think in the Planning Department, we have the same thing as evidenced by the staff, the good staff that have left. So I would echo Julia's concerns that we can work with the planners so that they don't leave. But I think that this is a model that can work. I think we just need to do it in a manner to be very, you know, very confident that we can hire, that this board can hire the right person as the cannabis manager, and that all of the staff, as Julia said, that all of the staff get the support they need. So I trust our HR Director, William Schertz, to work with the board on this. I think he can work expeditiously and we can move on that. Certainly, we'll deal with the budget at mid-year, and I think any other questions, we can deal with as we go. So thank you.
Supervisor McCordy?
So how many people were you talking about that are presently employed in the cannabis unit?
I would ask Julia to answer that question, please.
So we have four planners that are assigned in there. We also have two staff assistants and then one extra help department analyst, as well as two vacant positions. So we have a sort of mixture within there.
So I would hope that somehow in our org chart, that there's still a connection between, if they're going to be housed in the Planning Department, there has to be some sort of liaison person just to deal with the, with things like purchasing and vehicles and all the stuff that goes along with having a county department, which the, you know, the supervisors aren't going to be there all the time to answer those questions or take care of them. So we have to think about some kind of level of support that they need administratively to do their job. Any thoughts?
Well, presumably that, some of that administrative support would come from the Division Manager that will be hired. division manager that will be hired. So we, we definitely have a lot of work to do. I guess I did go into this discussion assuming that the ad hoc had already explored this issue with planning staff, so I, I guess I wasn't aware that this would be a huge surprise, but maybe it was more of a surprise than I thought.
Well, I think it's a surprise no matter what direction we go in. If we ask Julia to, to finish phase one, that's also a huge surprise. And I'm not against it, that's why I was asking, what's the alternative? Seems to me if we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to hit the, we're going to just push people off a plank. What we're doing hasn't worked.
I'm just wondering if we make this change in our staffing and organization chart, and we get no additional permits approved by the state, and at the same time, we see, we have additional resignations from the county. I mean, it, as bad as, as it looks like now, it could even, it could look worse, so.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. Should we clarify that we don't want to force anyone to work on cannabis phase one who doesn't want to? Because we've seen resignations, I've heard there could be more, we have more people who don't want to work on this. I don't want to see us sink the planning department. And, you know, in the end, we don't get a planning department, and we don't get cannabis permits approved. So it has to be people who actually want to work on cannabis phase one.
Chair Jodi, this, this is CEO Angelo, I apologize for just jumping in, but I think maybe, maybe a, a part, part of this solution, I, there's, all these ideas are good ideas, it's just, you know, working through this. But what might be really beneficial is that the ad hoc work with HR to hire the cannabis manager. Because I think that by hiring the cannabis manager, you could really emphasize the importance, the timeframe, the urgency, not that the planning department can't do that, but I think that that would really give, give a message to the person that we're hiring in that position. And then at that point, you know, the, they, they have very clear expectations, whoever comes in, as to what the needs are, and, you know, decide if it's a good job match. So maybe we just start there, that we're looking at the cannabis manager working for the board of supervisors, the ad hoc is involved and does the screening to get the, the top two candidates to bring to the full board to hire. I mean, that, that all can work, that's, that's not a problem. So if this board is agreeable to that, we could start there, with the ad hoc working on hiring, and the ad hoc bringing the top two candidates to the full board for a decision. I think that we, we can do that quickly, I'm sure William could just jump in. Planning has already sent in a requisition to open the recruitment, and I believe that there are people out there locally that are very interested in this position. So if it pleases the board, I think we could start right there.
So if I may, as a former department head, I, I like that idea, because I, what I don't want is an orphan that's sitting out there. I mean, we already have enough trouble trying to get the permits through, and then if, if we have somebody who reports to us, but we still have the structure of a department, that's, that's a much better place to start, I think, than saying, let's just cut the whole thing off, and, and start a whole new division. Maybe that's where we're headed, but I just worry a little bit about, you know, having sort of been without staff for a couple of months, when I was with the UC Cooperative Extension, it was very, very difficult, and it, it's just the way things worked out, it wasn't by design. And it's important that we don't create orphans in this process, we already have enough working against us.
So I personally think that we may see fewer people resign or, or leave the, or leave that division, because if they're still an employee of the planning and building department, it may look like it's a better career path for them than to jump with this new division, and they don't know what's the future of this new division. I, I don't know, I just think it poses less risk in terms of losing staff.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Can, for the CEO, can, can we still make sure that we're not assigning people to work on phase one, who will, as a result, look for jobs elsewhere? I don't want to lose one more person from our planning and building.
Chair Jodi, Supervisor Williams, I will work with Julia and Nash, and we will do what we can. I mean, obviously, we can't hold somebody that doesn't want to stay, but we'll do what we can to keep our good staff. I, I really do want to emphasize having the ad hoc work on the hiring and the full board hiring. I, I can tell you, I think it could make a significant difference, just knowing where this program started in, in the ag department, and, and then in the planning department, I think it could make a difference. So I think we're on a good path here. We can all work together, the executive office, the planning department, and the board, and get this done. So I, I think it's, I think it's been a good discussion. Thank you.
I think if, Supervisor Mulhern.
I have not had a single comment. So I've been listening carefully and taking notes, and I just want to make sure, you know, this conversation started out pretty human gloom for the people that really did trust in the county government, and really did put their faith that the leadership team would figure it out, and I hope that we can still, for at least some people. And I'm understanding the idea of the board hiring the cannabis manager, I think that's great, and having people specifically that want to work on cannabis, really focusing on phase one. I hope we continue to also simultaneously work on phase three through planning and building, because it does look like some phase one applicants are going to have to go the phase three route, and so I want to make sure that's still happening. What I didn't hear, and what I think that we should leave with today in particular, because Supervisor Williams and Hashak are having a town hall, we need to start getting the word out to the legacy cultivators in phase one, that they need to prepare to have their complete application ready to submit again, that they need every piece of paper so that they can submit it. And I don't know why, if we have explored the Acela program, or, I'm trying to pronounce it, that Cal Cannabis uses, just an online documenting system, many of our cultivators have used that system, it's not reinventing the wheel, it makes sense to me that we would go ahead and use that, and I didn't hear a reason why, or why not. So I think that there's a lot of important things that we need to be doing while we are also out for this cannabis manager position. And, you know, it really does have to be priority of this board to, as much as possible, try to make it so that our legacy cultivators that are in phase one can continue to cultivate through this process until they get the, the hard now, or not. I mean, they have, many of them do not have income to sustain waiting two or three years to go through phase three, and that's really important. There's been a lot of discussion around the equity grant, and we have not had this conversation since I've been on the board. The income qualifications that were submitted with that grant are, a lot of cultivators are not meeting those qualifications, and so we have, we have an incredible amount of work to do, and I don't want to lose sight of keeping the ball rolling for phase three while we're trying this move another, at another new thing. And so I'm wondering if we could have direction today, that the ad hoc and, I don't know if it would be radio ads, or flyers, or what kind of press release that would go out that just lets phase one applicants know that they need to start preparing and having all of their documents ready to resubmit, because it definitely sounds like that's the, the more clear path for them, than trying to wait for even a cannabis manager to come in and go through all the files and then tell people what they missed. I mean, I heard loud and clear that that's a process that's taking far too long.
So that, that's brilliant, let's make sure we give that direction on the income. Do you want to give direction to increase it to median, or 1.5 times median? I've heard that we're cutting most people out of the equity program.
I think median makes more sense than low income, very low income, especially when you're talking about having to spend $12,000 and you only make 50.
And, and I also heard direction to staff to require 100% complete reapplication submitted, a planning staff to define the specification for the submittal process, including file name, the order of the records in the file, a sign off or table contents sheet, and ideally an online portal, not reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, I think, I think that we can get that message out to cultivators, so they're not just in limbo. This is what we need you to do, we need you to submit the full application.
On, on the question of the grant expenditures, I think we need to hear from staff as to what were the promises made by the county in the grant application. So if, presuming that there were some restrictions on the grant funds, I think we need to understand what those restrictions were, whether or not we can actually change the eligibility requirements at this point, I, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Thank you, this is Julia Acker-Crogg, and, you know, I'm going to do my best to answer this, but I have to say Megan Duquette was really the, the keeper of that information, so it might be something we need to come back to the board with. But my limited understanding is that the, the application that we submitted, it's pretty hard to change that at this point, especially because we also have done numerous board actions related to that. I'm not sure if we would be awarded money if we were looking at moderate income, but I really, I can't say that definitively, and what I would want to do is probably follow up with our firm that we've hired to help administer the program, and really double-check with them, because they have the direct line with GoBiz. So I, I don't feel like I can fully answer it at the moment, but at least I would be concerned about that direction, because the equity grant has strict parameters, and it's important that we stay in line with those. It's not really at the discretion of the board to decide what that income level should be, you have to really be in line with that grant application.
So Julia, could we simply ask that, simply, with the 100 other things you're doing, ask that, that planning and building work, and the cannabis division work with the ad hoc committee to kind of go over what the options are for spending those funds? You know, there's another option, and I think it's probably in the grant, is we could be perhaps using some of the funds to pay for some of this additional staffing for the cannabis unit. So anyway, just, maybe they could just simply work with the ad hoc on, on the options that are available.
Yes, certainly. I mean, we can work with the ad hoc and, and discuss with our grant administrators on it, and, and then obviously report back to the board about what those changes are, and whether or not it's feasible.
Okay. Supervisor Williams?
How much of Julia Acker-Crogg's time do we have for cannabis? Is it a half?
My truthful answer is that, you know, right now, I've been filling the role of, previously to our current resignations, I was covering for both our vacant senior planner position in our Fort Bragg office, as well as filling my role of chief planner here. And with the resignations, at least for the short term, I have to really be dedicating a large chunk of my time to keeping our planning division up and running, and that we get to be able to conduct our, our business. So, you know, I can't say it's 50% of my time, every week it differs. Some days, 100% of my time is cannabis, and other days, 100% of my time is regular planning.
And this is Nash Gonzalez, interim director. I too have been sharing a lot of the load with Julia, and trying to move a lot of the applications through the process, review of the staff reports. This is something that I started to assist Julia with several weeks ago, in fact, it goes back a few months ago. So it is difficult, and I do understand where Julia comes from, where she says that some weeks it's, it could be a little bit more, other weeks it's a lot less. Planning commission weeks, that's, that's where a lot of the time gets taken up.
Well, we do need to wrap this up, but I, I certainly understand the, well, I don't think I fully understand. I, I understand to some extent the stress that the planning department is under right now, and, and fully would support hiring outside planning staff in any capacity to help out the planning department, whether it's for the cannabis applications, or for just other permits that the planning department is attempting to process. Knowing that I think a restructure of the department is probably really in order, but, but maybe in the interim, the best thing that could be done would be to bring in some seasoned planning consultants that live in our community to give some assist where, where possible. So have, have we captured everything for this agenda item? I mean, it is just about seven o'clock.
I think we're done.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to say that with the equity grant and the income level, I, you know, I know that with trying to change something for our grant, it was, seemed like a big hassle according to Megan Duquette, and it had to go through GoBiz, and then it had to go through the program man, or our program manual. And so, so I think that the idea is good, and maybe the ad hoc can, can explore that without using too much staff time.
Okay, thank you for that.
Chair Jodi?
Yeah.
Could I ask this board to please, and there is, there's been a, a lot, a long discussion here, and what I see as a lot of action that came out of this, but we don't have any type of motion on the table?
Right, direction given to staff.
Excuse me?
Right, direction given to staff.
Okay, well, but I think, I think what we're hearing is we do need to kind of pull it all together into one concise list, and I think the CEO had, had a, had a really good list there, but there, it may, we still may want, want one or two items that, that were added after that, after that summary.
Okay, I, I do have a summary, which I gave, which I, we can, we can certainly translate into direction, but you've also talked about, you've talked about public information as far as notifying cultivators, you've talked about the grant expenditures and what you'd like to see with the grant. So what I don't want is, I don't want us to walk out and be confused, and, and that we, we don't, that there's, there's a difference between what the board thinks they directed and what the staff think they got as direction. So, so maybe we can say, direction to staff to work with the board, with the board ad hoc, with human resources, to move forward on the hiring of the cannabis manager, and to look at the cannabis unit staffing with the assurance of retaining good staff in the cannabis unit, to also work with our public information officers, to message the changes and timeframes to the cultivators, and also to explore opportunities with the grant expenditures. And I, I hope I got that. And so I'd ask Julia or Nash to add to that, and then certainly our, our board members.
Thank you, CEO Angelo. I think you captured what I had, and, and yeah, I, I think you captured that fully. I don't have anything additional on my notes.
Same here.
Chair Jodi, is there anything that, that you or any of the board members think we missed that you would like to add to this motion?
I, I don't think you missed anything, but I don't, I'm looking at the other board members, is there anything that board members felt is not captured there?
No, frankly, it's terrifying, but I think you captured it.
Well, think how the staff feel.
Not bad for seven o'clock. Supervisor McGordy.
Can we just take a vote?
What clarification and what to communicate to the growers, I, I think that Supervisor Mulhern said it right, is get your papers in order, and that's what we want to let them know, is a really important step in the process, is that we'll probably have to resubmit them, and that's what we want to communicate, right? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Go ahead, Atlas.
Do we currently have a motion on the floor?
So would someone like to direct that, move that into a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so now we do have a motion, and we did take public comment earlier, can we call the roll?
Supervisor McGordy?
Yes.
Supervisor Mulhern?
Yes.
Supervisor Hashak?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Yes.
And Chair Jodi?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
And we want to thank everyone for being willing to be really open and honest with, with their thoughts and their concerns, and, and I think we may have reached, you know, a reasonable direction there, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll move this program forward. We, it is 7:01. We, it is 7:01, we have board member ad hoc committee reports, do we want to proceed with that, or do we want to adjourn for the day?
I want, I want to call the 5:30 rule.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm getting really burned out, my brain's not working very well, so I, if we were willing to adjourn, this is, I think, enough for one day, personally.
I think that's a fair comment, and so at 7:01, we'll adjourn today's meeting.
Thank you.